In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCIM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone here for public comment? We're going to change up the agenda a little bit out of cycle. If we add something, we're going to have Mrs. Magna come up now. If Mrs. Magna wouldn't mind coming to the podium and just state your name for the folks listening at home.
Hi, Sue Magna, Veterans Director for the Town of North Reading. I am here tonight and I asked some of the veterans and as well as the spouses of veterans to join me tonight because we have some pretty exciting news. I've been trying for some years to get the wall that heals to come to the town of North Reading. So this past year I applied again. They had 117 applications. Out of 117 applications, 34 were accepted, two for Massachusetts, one being Bellingham and the other one, the Town of North Reading. Woo-hoo! So I know you have a lot on your agenda, so I apologize. I literally put this together real quick tonight because I've been out of the office. So what I have is the wall that heals and this is what we're getting. This is how it will come in, the mobile unit. This is how it looks at night illuminated. In the daytime, this is the largest moving wall out to date. This wall is 375 feet long. We will be hosting it at the Ipswich River Park and I will be coordinating this with Maureen as well as Marty Tilton. It has, this one also comes with a mobile unit. Understand, an education center if you will, for the kids. So this adds more than the, there's a couple of walls out there, so let's, I just want to clarify. There's the wall that heals, which is this one, and then there's the moving wall. The moving wall does not come with the mobile center. Where this one does come with the educational moving center and it also will host our hometown heroes illuminated up on the wall there. This is the mobile unit, as you can see how it looks, expanded out. And the wall will be coming to the North Reading Ipswich River Park and I apologize, that date, the 19th is wrong. It's the 15th to the 18th. They'll be in here on the 14th, which is a Wednesday, to start setting up and Wednesday the 15th, excuse me, Wednesday the 15th they'll be coming in, right?
They'll be in here, yeah.
14th is the Wednesday. 14th, they'll come in to set it up and then we'll do what they call a soft opening that evening, Thursday, Fri-, and then Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday we'll have it.
If Tuesday comes in Wednesday, they set it up, soft opening.
Yeah. And then the 18th is Sunday, which late in the afternoon, stop breaking it down again, they'll be out of here on the 19th.
That's fantastic.
This is a tremendous, a tremendous feat for the town, as far as I'm concerned. An amazing, for the Vietnam veterans, their spouses, we've lost five Vietnam veterans, I want to say, in the past eight months here alone. And I can't be more proud to bring this here to our Vietnam veterans and to the community in general and be able to be honored for us to host this. It will require about 150 volunteers in total and we will require about 30 volunteers to set up and about 30 volunteers to break down and then it has to be shipped, it has to be around the clock shifts from there to maintain and have somebody onboard all the time. Not for worrying about anybody in the destruction end, but more, there are going to be people, believe it or not, that'll come out at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning when it's very quiet and everything to come in and look it up. So it'll give you the option to rub the names of the people that they know. This will come completely illuminated. There is nothing we have to do with the wall itself other than have it manned and if we're looking to have any kind of souvenirs for that event, for the event, which I will work on that as well, but this is a tremendous opportunity for us and I'm looking forward to it. So surprise to my veterans over there. I hope you all, I know we've all been working hard to try to get this, it's been like eight years in the making, so we finally did it.
That's great. Let's congratulate them. Susan, could I ask you a favor? If you could get on the school committee's agenda to present this to them because I think it'd be great. I know the kids would be out of school, but you know, the kids have to do hours, community hours, and I think if you can get more high school students to participate in this so they can actually learn, they don't have the real true appreciation for what this all means. So if we can get a lot of school participation, I know they're out, but the community hours still can be collected if we can, Maureen, work with them to make it a community service hour for them.
Absolutely.
I think that would be fantastic to see them there managing, working the wall.
Sign-up genius, sign-up genius ongoing for positions for hours, what ones the high school volunteers can do, what the ones the bachelor veterans can do.
Yeah, it was fantastic.
Do a lot of marketing on it.
My goal was to have this actually brought here during school time and because of the weather in New England, they kind of shy away from the October end, so they're usually more down the south.
Yeah, that's okay.
And I did push, I did everything I could to try to get it during.
Those are still very good. Any dates are good.
I think it's going to be an amazing, amazing educational piece and absolutely the schools will be notified and I would love to get it to the committee.
Thank you. I want to thank your veterans, your veterans committee. Thank you for bringing this to our town. This is a wonderful tribute to have here in town. We're honored to have it, so thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions? Are you, we're good? Okay. That brings us to the board member reports and we'll start with Mrs. Minipelli tonight. Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, just a couple of things. There's been a lot of comment on social media regarding the proposed 40B development at 20 Elm Street, which is down by Teresa's near Thompson Country Club. I know a lot of times the residents feel in the dark on these things and they feel like these developments are dropped in on them, so I want to have full disclosure and let everybody know what I know as far as this proposal right now. We had a meeting with myself, Mr. Prisco, Ms. McKnight, and Mr. Gilberto with the developer, I believe it was back in June, and the developer said he wanted our input and wanted to get back to us on the subject. We saw his initial plans, we thought it was a bit much for that small area, didn't quite fit our vision for that area of town, gave him our personal opinions, certainly explained it, which is 105. Never heard back from the developer. The town planner reached out recently, no reply, and contrary to the developer's assertion that he wanted the town's input and feedback, the first I heard about it was a letter from Mass Housing and now they want to put 200 rental units in there. There's a walkthrough tomorrow at the property, which is right next to Teresa's Prime, at 10:15 a.m. The town has taken the liberty of vice need of butters, so they would know. Again, we want full disclosure on this. If you can come out, you want to see the property, I'd recommend you do that. That's at 10:15 tomorrow and it's 20 Elm Street. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr.? Mr. Messeri, you have anything?
We did have a meeting last week, two and a half week meeting, and we have one scheduled for nine.
Any update on that?
We're getting closer to identifying and acquire the land required for the chlorine pumping station on Main Street.
So that's progressing in a positive direction?
That's progressing in a very positive direction.
Awesome.
And our approach to the two stations, try to make them identical, one for our property on Central Street and the one on Main Street. And this is to add chlorine to the water supply coming from Andover so that it guarantees there'll be adequate chlorine content at the other end of town, the far end of town.
Great.
So nailing down the property will allow us to go forward with the FEIR, the final environmental impact report that needs to be filed to move the project forward.
That's great. And I know it's on the agenda tonight, so hopefully we'll get some more detail time.
You'll get more details will be offered with Consultant Roberts here, Mark, so they're offering a more detailed update later on.
Great.
Thanks, Steve.
Anything else, Mr. Messeri?
No.
Mr. O'Leary.
I know it's early, it's time to hold the new business. I just figured while people are still awake, you know, just wishing everybody a happy and safe holiday season and a healthy and prosperous new year. And to Mrs. Magna, sorry she left, but again, offer our condolences on the passing of her father.
Oh, yeah, we should.
Just this past week and I know it's a terrible loss for her family and offer our condolences to her.
Yes.
That's it.
Yes, I wish we had grabbed her while we were here, so I agree. Anything else, Mr. O'Leary?
Just in relation to the 40B proposal, you know, I think it's important that people understand that it's not even a Christmas jingle.
Marcy, can you please? She's the only one here that knows technology.
No, just in relation to the 40B project that's being proposed, I think it's important for the public to understand that the owner of the property, the developer, certainly has the rights of state law to propose this type of a project. And I think it's important for us as board members and town as an administration to better understand and appreciate the process that they have to go through and the process that we have to go through in order to consider the project as what's going to be proposed. We've had longstanding processes here in North Reading that has worked very well over the years and I think it's important that elected members and appointed members and members of the administration be cautious in their public comments to ensure that we don't put the town at a disadvantage in considering the proposal, to put the town at a disadvantage in relation to what the specifics of the project may end up being and looking like and that we should make sure that the process is allowed to run its course appropriately and not necessarily incite public concern unnecessarily. You know, as the process unfolds, there'll be plenty of opportunities for input and I think the process that we have here, which has been modeled, used as a model for the state to encourage other communities to do the way that we've handled it in the past, should be allowed to run its course. So as far as comments on social media, as far as even public comments in relation to what our feelings may be, we should allow the process to unfold in an orderly fashion in order to ensure the town's best interest is maintained and the town says to how the final product comes out. Otherwise, we're jeopardizing the town's position. So yes, the walkthrough on the property is tomorrow. I encourage people who are interested to be there, but that's just the first step. There's going to be lots of opportunities for input.
So I don't want to get into a long discussion on this and I'm not going to have anybody commenting on it, but I will say this, Mr. O'Leary, because I do believe you're trying to single out a few of us, and I can understand that, but I want to make sure you fully understand the situation here. We're going back to sometime, Mrs. McKnight, back in the summer?
It's a meeting, May 2. I get a phone call within a day or so, I come down here, we have a meeting, very informal, I mean, back of an envelope type discussion here. I know the process, Mr. O'Leary, and you've been here a long time, your brother has participated in this process and probably has been the architect for how this process should work and I agree with it. I think it's a fantastic process this town has put in place. So we had an agreement that we would follow this process, we talked about it. We didn't, I didn't hear anything until all of a sudden I get something mailed to me that this thing is happening. So we want to follow the process, but what you have here is a developer that doesn't want to follow that process. So I think you're singling out the wrong individual and I think what you need to do is be cautious when you have someone that wants to take this and jam it down the town's throat without having conversation and letting us be part of the solution, be part of the conversation, that concerns me. That's troubling to me. I've been here long enough to know when something isn't right and this isn't right and to be singling us out because we've been caught off guard on this, I think it's wrong and I think we're off to a very bad start because you're right, Mr. O'Leary, there is a process and I hope we can get back to that process because I think it's a very good process. I think the CPC understands it well. I certainly understand it well. The problem is the person that submitted this document doesn't understand it, so.
I think what you're firing, Mr. Chairman, is that if you look back historically as to what's occurred, and Mr. Pierce can attest to this because he was involved in all these subcommittees, most of the subcommittees that I chaired for years and for hundreds and hundreds of hours and invested the time to make sure that the process was working, for the most part, we didn't find out about any of these things until we got notified by the state. They didn't come up. So I mean, the first, and again, I'm not here to defend or, all I know is discussions took place in June, the board members weren't even aware of it, or the rest of us were not aware of it, that it was even a proposal.
I wasn't aware of it.
Until about five weeks ago when passing a comment was made and then we got the notice, what, three weeks ago. So the fact that they came forward to alert us was actually a step that we were not used to, generally are not used to and not afforded in the past. So I think again, my words of caution, I would hope that you would take them for what you think they're worth. I mean, it's, we have, we have at least 10 of these things under our belt and it's worked very well. And I think what's getting off to the wrong start is getting social media involved and making statements upfront when it hasn't, when they, we haven't, we just got notified, formally just got notified.
Again.
Formal notification.
There was an agreement, there was a process that was dictated.
Agreement between whom? Not this board, wasn't even informed. The CPC wasn't informed. An application wasn't even made.
I understand. I'm not going to get into debate, the process has started. We're going to let the process flush itself out. We're not going to get into a debate tonight.
No, no.
But the bottom line is, I'm not taking.
I don't need you to caution me.
I'm not cautioning.
I don't need you to caution me.
No, actually, I believe you do.
No, I don't, sir. You have a lot of hubris right now.
We're moving on.
You don't have any idea what's happened.
We're moving on. So I have one thing tonight that I wanted to bring up under the board report and our Northeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council each year honors a citizen for their outstanding service and support to the NEMLEC and its mission. This year, they selected Lieutenant Thomas Romeo. He was awarded the Philip L. Mahoney Exceptional Service Award, so I wanted to just take a moment tonight to recognize Lieutenant Romeo, congratulate him on receiving the distinguished honor of the exceptional service award. So town administrator, if you could just pass along my sincere congratulations to him and I'm sure the other board members as well, I think that's an outstanding, it's certainly something that he's earned, he certainly deserves it. Thomas has been a consistent contributor to the NEMLEC and it's an important part of our safety in our community, so I want to thank him. Okay, so that's it. Next thing on the agenda of the minutes. Mr. O'Leary, November, actually, you know what? We can come back to the minutes if you, board members don't mind. We have the CPC here tonight, I'd like to move right to meet with CPC. We're going to go over the joint appointments for Economic Development Committee, discuss the RFP associated with the senior housing, which I asked to be on there and we'll go over that. We'd love you to participate in that conversation. So we'll start with the joint appointments and hopefully get this to work right. Okay. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Chris Hayden as a associate member to the Economic Development Committee for a term to expire July 12th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. It's a roll call vote, so we'll start with the CPC unless you have some comments you want to make first?
No, we do appreciate Chris putting the time into this and helping us stay abreast of what's going on with that commission and contribute to as much as we can as well. So as from me, I say aye.
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 And the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Messeri?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mrs. Minipelli and the chair votes aye. Thank you, Chris. The Economic Development Committee is very active. I appreciate you being part of it. I think they have a lot of work ahead of them, especially as we hopefully someday get into the wastewater, more active in the wastewater. There's a lot to come. So tonight, I asked for us to discuss the RFP associated with our senior housing. It's been a discussion I've heard since even before I was on this board and I think, you know, with the holiday season upon us and with us getting into the new year, we just finished our strategic planning update, which we've presented and it's in our strategic plan as one of our objectives. You know, and I've said this before, the town is land-rich, cash-poor. You know, anybody, if you haven't been over to see PBD Court, I really encourage the community to see it. You know, last year I had two members of Secretary Ash's office come out and do a walkthrough of the property with us in detail. We went underneath them, people don't know that there are crawl spaces underneath those buildings. The building's tired, our senior housing is tired and I think the time is now to address it or have a plan. Let's, and if we have all this land, we have this land available to us, why can't we come up with a solution? My discussion, what I'd like to have tonight with the board, and we've discussed it during our exam, our strategic planning session, is why can't we have an RFP to put this land out there, even if it's for a dollar, to a developer, to develop and build our senior housing at some level for, if it's affordable for North Reading residents and then the rest, commercial rates? If it gets us there, why can't we consider that? Is that a doable thing? Is that even legal? And that's why I was hoping we could have a brief discussion tonight with the board, with the CPC and members of the community, if you would like to participate in this conversation. But can we at least try to pick a starting point for this evening? And I'm not sure, town administrator, you want to maybe start things off?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chairman, and to the members of the board. If you have your packet in front of you, we're on page 41, which is a memorandum from the town planner, which I believe the planning commissioner has also been provided a copy of. So I've spoken with the planner to convey some of the desired, well, the overall desire of trying to increase our available housing for seniors and the initial discussion that's taking place at the strategic planning level regarding the property at the end of Carpenter Drive. There's also one a budding property on Parsonage Lane and she has had some conversation with the Housing Services Office relative to what might or might not be feasible for a development there, which I'm going to ask her to just kind of summarize for us here, but I want to make it very clear, I don't want anyone to think that that has presupposed any sort of a decision with regard to the direction we're going to go in. It's more just the research that we've been doing to try to inform our discussions here. So I need to make that very clear as we're going through this. And through you, Mr. Chairman, I'll ask Ms. McKnight to just summarize. If we can give her the microphone, Mr. Pierce.
Thanks. If you would like, I do have a slide that just shows the properties. Oh, thank you.
Again, you're going to be discussing, discussing a couple parcels and one of them was identified for a, some type of senior housing at some point back many years ago, right? I think it was identified, 10 acres?
Yeah. If I may briefly, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You know, we've actually, we've looked at this property for a while and we thought this would be a good use for it and we also looked at some of the ways that it could be done to make it not just good for senior housing, but also to make, to provide some services involved in the, in the development of it, to help the people that would live there get access to maybe a small store or something like that. So this is something we've been looking at, that we've been talking about for a while, so we really appreciate it being brought forth now. It's a good thing for the town.
Mrs. McKnight.
There are two properties highlighted here. The first is Carpenter Drive, which is a 10-acre property that the town owns, and the other is Parsonage, 12 Parsonage Lane, which is a 5-acre parcel. Excuse me, Free Carpenter Drive was the subject of a proposal done about a decade ago initiated by the Housing Authority for supportive housing. At the time, there was a state grant available, the Housing Authority got permission from town meeting, because it is a town-owned property rather than a housing authority-owned property, the Housing Authority received permission from town meeting to pursue this project in partnership with a nonprofit to use state grant money to build supportive services housing. And that would be housing that's not just traditional affordable housing, but that had significant services for seniors, medical-related and so forth. Excuse me. The grant was not successful and that grant is no longer available. So over the years, this was a property that was highlighted in our housing production plan as having been previously identified as appropriate for senior housing. Now, what we have been talking about more recently is more traditional affordable housing, which does not include supportive services necessarily, but one of the questions I did want to ask, because that, this was something that was pursued in the past, it had been talked about in the past, if that was the direction that the town wanted to take with this property, there are other resources, there are different resources, but there are other resources that would be available to the town for that type of project. That would be more in the form of long-term loans at low interests with opportunities for deferred payment, but they wouldn't be grant funds. So that would be one type of path we could go with this. Another type of path that we could go with it would be the discussion, you know, as town administrator referred to, the discussion that we've had with the Regional Housing Services Office, and they would help us with either path, but what we've talked about most recently with them is putting out an RFP to develop this in a more traditional affordable housing type project. So I was interested in your feedback on whether we do want to pursue that more traditional type of affordable housing rather than, you know, introduce a component of, you know, whether it was medical services or other supportive services. And also roughly what size project we're thinking of? About 10 years ago, this was looked at as about a 24-unit project. We can stay with that, we could increase it. These are just some points that our consultant with the Housing Services Office has asked me, roughly what, what's the scope of this, you know, thing that you're looking at and also whether we want to consider having any market rate units mixed in, because if we were to do 100% affordable housing, there would need to be a subsidy that came from the town. There are opportunities for state grant funds for very low-income rental-only projects. They do have waiting lists. They tend not to favor senior housing, they tend to favor family housing, though it is possible that we could compete for a grant like that to get money toward a senior-only affordable housing project. Or if we, if we were to mix in some affordable units, that would really carry the deficit because each of the affordable units is constructed at a loss. So you know, at one point when we had talked about doing this project, we had talked about doing 100% affordable and in that way, we would need to have a significant subsidy from the town in order to help a developer make up the difference. These were kind of the basic questions I was looking for feedback from before we continue our conversations with the Housing Services Office. They're happy to offer their support, any of the paths we choose, whether it's RFP development or pursuing state programs for subsidies, but that's what I wanted to request feedback on.
Mr. Gobert.
Just a clarifying question through you, Mr. Chairman. The 24-unit project that you referred to that was being looked at a number of years ago, was that limited to the property on Carpenter Drive at that point in time?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Messeri then, Mr. Schultz.
Can you explain why you picked these two lots of land?
Thank you. The reason was, when we were doing the housing production plan and even before that, we had heard a lot of conversation about how there was a desire to look for an opportunity for senior affordable housing on the Carpenter Drive site. At the time, there seemed to be some support and consensus for going ahead with, you know, a grant-supported project. I think that the town, you know, authorized the Housing Authority to go ahead three years in a row in order to try to pursue this grant. Unfortunately, they weren't successful, but this property has always sort of been flagged, so to speak, as a possible area for senior affordable housing. I don't really know the history of Parsonage Lane, only that it abuts the property, that the town owns it, that if we wanted to pursue it.
Mr. Schultz and then turn over.
One, I don't know who would be best answers. What is the topography of that area? Is it pretty, is, can you get to one property from the other? Is it hilly or?
Mr. Hayden.
12 Parsonage is a.
Twelve Parsonage is, is hilly.
Okay.
Three Carpenter is flat, okay? But why I was asking for recognition earlier, twenty years plus ago, I was on a reuse committee for the Weeks Building, which is now the David Damon Tavern. It was always the David Damon Tavern, but it had been the old library to see if we're going to save that building, or sell it, or whatever was going to happen to it. Parcel of land over at Absutriver Park, the old farm.
Wheeler.
Wheeler, the Wheeler property, to see if we should buy it or let them dispose it anyway, if it was used for the town, and Twelve Parsonage Lane. And the other property, which is now Three Carpenter, was something else at that point in time, because there was no street there. And one of, what came up, two things we already know of the three, was the old Weeks Library, which has been restored as the Damon Tavern, and the Wheeler property, which is now incorporated basically into Absutriver Park. The third part was Twelve Parsonage, and if you've ever been out there, it's a beautiful piece of property.
Can you get from one to the other?
You can get from one to the other. You can get from one to the other. And with the development that's happening up in Mount Vernon, I think it might be a good thing to try to save that parcel, because they've got a forty-B there already, just up the way, you can see it. And that was what that, the reuse committee came back at, so it was supposed to be, you know, try to keep it as open space. And then the other parcel, which is now Three Carpenter, I think we're going to give it to the school committee, for an elementary school, but they decided they didn't need it. So it came back to the town.
Mr. Pierce.
Yeah, I think the answer to your question you're asking is why those, it's actually location. Anything that we did there would have pretty much walking distance to the center of town. So it was a good fit for putting up some elderly housing, and we already have some others there. So we thought it might also encourage some of the development downtown.
That's kind of what I was waiting to hear.
Okay. Thought about it.
As far as the Parsonage Lane parcel, the town acquired that actually by chance through tax title. And at one point, we were looking to reserve that as a potential expansion or satellite site for cemetery expansion, because we were concerned about useful life of the, useful life, so to speak, of the cemetery that we're going to be built on. So I think we need to take another look at that, as far as, you know, projection-wise, you know, how long do we see the cemetery location, you know, lasting? And then we held onto this five acres was talked about as a potential future expansion for cemetery.
Is that ten acres or five acres?
Five. That was five.
The rent is five. Twelve Parsonage is five acres.
So totality, it's ten?
No.
No, ten, Carpenter Drive is ten.
Carpenter Drive is ten.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Carpenter Drive is ten?
Yeah.
Okay. And Parsonage is five.
But Parsonage, we did acquire, basically through tax title, and leave for open space and/or potential expansion.
Back when it was identified as a potential lot for senior housing, was there a plan to do a sort of a, making this all affordable, or to bring in some market rate so we can get some affordable? What was?
It was completely affordable.
No completely affordable.
And the subsidy was, yeah, it was coming from a state grant, and there was a partnership with a nonprofit, I believe it was Mystic Valley Elder Services.
Mystic Valley Elder Services was the driving force behind it.
And I've spoken to Representative Jones, and I don't think there's anything on the horizon for something that could, as a grant, that he's aware of, but I know he's looking into it. We will continue to follow up with him. I thought we would have this conversation tonight, get back to him, because to me, I think there is an immediate action you could take if you can structure this, construct this with some market rate units. Tie it to affordable units for North Reading residents. This could probably happen sooner than later. If you're going to want to wait for a grant and do a hundred percent all affordable, first of all, ten acres all affordable, that's a lot of units. Today, I think we have fifty affordable units right now for seniors. Is that right? That number sound right?
Oh, PBD Court?
No, PBD's like forty. And then don't we have some trailers or something?
No, there's just four other units up at, four units up at Swan Pond, that are family.
So we have forty-four at PBD?
Two townhouses.
Two townhouses up at Swan Pond, which are family units.
Does the Central Place have a handful of affordable?
Well, there's a component of affordable units, okay, at all the fortyBs that came through here. Central Place, there's family housing at Kilburn Road. We've got Edgewood, there's a certain percentage that are set aside as affordable. So every one of the fortyBs that have already been approved over the years has an affordable component to it. Only the one, or maybe the one on the Elm Street too, were both over fifty-fives, so qualified that as senior. But over fifty-fives was the Elm Street Development, where at the curve was Roll Farm, and then Central Place. The other ones are just regular four-letting units.
Ms. Mullin? Oh, Gibberly? Want to just come to the party?
Good evening. My name is Kim Manzeli, and I'm a North Reading resident. I've lived here about sixteen years. I'm a registered nurse, and my professional background is senior care and supportive housing. So when I saw this, it was on the agenda. I felt it was important to just come up, because I've always been a strong advocate for aging and the elderly population. And I just wanted to quickly give a couple of thoughts in my feedback. I'm newly appointed to the Council on Aging in town, and I've been sitting in on the Social Service Action Team for several years. Just decided to lead the Project 500 Subcommittee of the Social Service Action Team, which is a Subcommittee that's, mission is to focus on the approximately five-hundred-sixty-five years of age in older residents that are living alone in North Reading. So our mission is outreach and to support these residents. I just felt that it's important to let you know that I work at Peter Samborn Place in Reading, and that's a sixty-two years in older or persons with a disability supportive housing site. I've been there for seven years now. My role right now is a resident care coordinator, and what I do is help the residents have access to referrals, to age in place with dignity, and also to have wealth, health and wellness programs, so they're active and engaged in the community. So it's a subsidized seventy-three unit facility. I've always felt that North Reading would benefit from some sort of supportive housing similar to this. You know, we, about a year and a half ago, had an Adult Day Health Program, as well as a home care agency. And those agencies closed, unfortunately, about a year and a half ago. Luckily, I've stayed on and been able to keep the community intact and bring programs to this community. But I really think that the town of North Reading would benefit from something similar to this type of supportive housing that's affordable, and also would meet the needs of maybe Adult Day Health or some type of enhanced supportive housing. So I just wanted to let you all know that. We are going to talk a little bit more about that at our next Council on Aging meeting, the Project 500, as well as taking an initiative for the town to be an age-friendly community. There's something out there called Massachusetts Healthy Aging Collaborative, and there are many states in Massachusetts that have joined this collaborative effort. And it just gives a formal commitment that the town is focused on an age-friendly community and what are the steps that we can take to foster that.
Mr. Schultz, please stay right there, because I couldn't agree more with what you just said, and thank you for your service to the town. What I would envision, and I know it's hard to do it on fifteen acres, but like a miniature version of Brooksbury Village, where as your needs increase, you can stay in the same facility, maybe go to the next Winger. Again, I don't know how you can do that on that size parcel, but something along those lines, I would love to see where as our seniors' needs increase, they can still stay in the same complex, maybe go to the next building over, what have you. And I think that's kind of what you're talking about a little bit too. That's what I would love to see, and I think that's a great idea for the town. Because you want to see seniors be able to stay in town.
Right.
As they get older, as their medical needs, you know, increase.
Andrew, that is Samborn Place.
Yeah. Yeah, but my understanding of a facility like that, I don't think, I think that would be a little bit more challenging for us, because when you have going from independent living to assisted living in a facility, I'm not so sure that we could structure that here and be, and to get, you know, we don't have any money, okay? So we have to pick a path that we could go down, that we could get someone to develop this for us, to provide us this need, to fill this need. And we have to do it with what we have, and right now, we don't have a lot except for the land. So that, you know, what you're describing, I can't imagine we could get anybody to do it without paying for it. We'd have to, to me, we'd have to pay for that, based on my research.
In a small footprint, we're only dealing with fifteen acres. You're not going to have, you know, you can only build on what you have.
Fifteen acres is not small.
Well, it's not Brooksbury Village, is what I'm saying. It's, you know.
Right.
It gives you options, but it's not, you can't put fifteen acres in there, it's not that big.
I understand. But I'm just saying, based on my research, to do something like that, the town would have to make a significant capital investment to pull that type of a service off. But I think if you could do senior housing, to at least use this as the first step, to build a senior housing that's affordable for our seniors, and, you know, I like the idea of the sixty-two and older, it's a great idea. And if we could build something like that, Danielle, I think you and I spoke a little bit about it, am I saying it wrong? I mean, is the research that we've done, to do something with, like Mr. Schultz has just described, would be a significant capital investment for the town?
I don't know exactly how much that costs. I do know that there are programs that would be available to us from the state to help us finance it. They aren't grants, though, they are loans. They're lower no-interest loans over a very long term with deferred payments. That's really what I know about that sort of scenario right now. I don't know what our total costs would be if we were to pursue a facility like that. I can certainly try to find that out.
Oh, I mean, I'm curious what the board wants to do, and what's your vision for senior housing? Mrs. Minipelli.
I mean, I think, I think we should pursue all options. Let's go, let's do it now, try these different methods. You have a great suggestion, throw an RFP out for a dollar and see what comes back. We don't have to accept everything. We have the benefit of all these people that have invested all of these years of time in knowing what the community needs. But just like you, before I even got on the board, that was a big, you know, issue that kept getting raised, and it still is being raised, and it's been on our strategic plan since I've been on the board. But I also think, my issue with having a development where there's affordable housing mixed with market rate housing, we have enough of that right now. And when the JT Berry got purchased, it was billed as an over fifty-five community, which is fantastic and wonderful and beautiful, but may not necessarily be affordable for many single or couple elderly people that want to buy now. It's very, it's a lot of money for people that are on fixed income. So I prefer to see something where it's really directed just to seniors, obviously to disabled as well, because those seem to be the two populations we need to think of. I wouldn't mind sub, doing some sort of subsidy, but I also think that there could be a developer out there that wants to develop this, get the land, wants to develop it for the dollar for the type of, you know, the type of development that you are mentioning, that you are mentioning, and they're going to make the income from the residents on their own. Let's try, let's see, let's put it out there and see what comes back.
Mr. Pierce.
Yeah. Since the land, since we own the land, the land cost wouldn't be part of the cost. So you are correct, it might be possible to get a developer to do that, because they won't have a land cost. And if we help them with the permitting, which is the biggest thing that slows most developers down, is if we can streamline the permitting for them, again, you'll get a lot more interest. That's one of the big things that slows them down, is the permitting processes. But these places also generate some income, while it might not be a lot. So if we let the Regional Housing Services Office, if we tell them that, first of all, I want to say we should focus just on the ten acres. I think that'd be a good idea, because that keeps the project at a manageable size for now, rather than, you know, try to, because to tie the other one in, it's going to be costly as far as infrastructure goes. So I think, let's just focus on the ten acres right now. So if we do that, and we get some input from them, we tell them what our goals are, and as far as what you're saying, Mr. Schultz said, I, let's ask them, let's ask them how we do that. And if they say, no, that's too much money, we'll just step back, as you were saying, until we get to a point where we can provide as much as possible with that piece of land. So with the, I would say that with the board's blessing, we will begin to do some research and do an RFP for it, and do some looking into what we might be able to do.
Yeah, I think it is doable to create, to structure an RFP, so it gives options. And that way, hopefully, we can encourage some bids with the options. But you have to think realistically on this, right? You're a developer, you're going to invest money on that property, even though you're getting it for a dollar, you obviously know the cost of construction is extremely high. So you have to have a way to return that investment. And if you do something like a Samborn Place, you're not going to get the return of that investment very quickly. So you're not going to get a lot of, I want to negotiate against myself here, but I'm just trying to sip from a reality cup. And the reality is, you're probably not going to get a lot of bids, but if you can develop a property for a dollar, then you bring some market value into it, market rate value to it, there's, to me, there'd be interest. It would be. But we could structure it where we could create this RFP that says, we should dictate. I don't know how many units you could put on these ten acres, and what we have to associate for parking and services, but let's just say it's eighty units or a hundred units. If you could take and dictate, right, today, we have forty-four houses at PBD Court. If we could turn the hundred into fifty of them from North Reading residents, it has to be affordable, and we dictate what that affordability is, lease another fifty that are at market value, market rate value, in that they could try to recover their, recoup their, their money. Something like that. I don't have all the answers, but that, in my mind, I'm thinking that's the most logical path. I don't know how many units you can get in and take it.
Well, that's something, that's why we would work with the people that do this and see, you know, because we're going to learn how, what the best way to do this is, and then we're, and that's what, then we'll bring something forth that does the best we can for the town. So I guess one of the questions is going to be right up front, is whether or not the town would have any interest in providing some of the funding, whether it be through a loan or to, or from the state, or what they would do, or if they want to try to make this strictly a commercial enterprise for some developer. In other words, if.
That's up to the board.
Yeah.
If I may, I think when we get, you put an RFP out, like Mr. Chairman, I think correctly puts, you make it kind of open where builders can fill in the blanks, and I think that's going to tell us what's out there once we get.
Well, I think that the question's going to get asked right up front.
Yeah.
As to whether or not the town, I mean, that's going to be one of the first questions.
It's going to be.
So that's why, that's why we have to place that question to you.
It's all how you structure this RFP, and that's why I'm bringing up for discussion.
So if you say, if you say, no, we don't think that we can do any of the, can support any of the funding right now, then that's a very important piece of information to how we present this as an RFP, because it means we now have to look at some market units, some way of making it profitable enough for somebody to build it.
To me, it would depend on what they're offering to build, whether I be, if they want to jump in, obviously.
Mrs. Mullin, did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted, maybe if we could, Kim, just, as a member of the SSAT, for the past few years, we've talked to a lot of towns doing this, I think there's a way that PBD, Samborn Place, had a way that the money was being, if you think it was only three hundred or four hundred for rent, the government paid for the balance of it. So I said, you could explain that, because that was one of the things they thought, so we looked at something that we only had in some other different places. But there is other income coming in, just because, you know, they can't afford much.
So we're subsidized, and I believe it's two oh two, a two oh two subsidy. You have to make, I believe it's under thirty-nine thousand dollars would be your annual income to qualify to live at Peter Samborn Place, and your rent is thirty percent of your income. So the government is subsidizing the other percent. So, you know, it's definitely an affordable housing option for seniors and those with disabilities, handicapped, accessible, and, you know, we do have the supportive services brought in. So it really. And, you know, we do have the supportive services brought in, so it really works very well there.
Is the owner getting full rent, whether it's vis a vis the property?
So it's mass housing and HUD property.
It's similar.
Danielle may have more to.
It's similar to the Housing Authority.
Add to the, that, you know, I've always been the one to provide the care and make sure the care and supportive services are in place. But you have to meet that income eligibility, and we're just managed by a property management company. But it's mass housing and HUD subsidized.
But remember, the development was paid for, probably by.
So United Church Homes was a group of invested churches many years ago, I want to say 30 years ago, and they own the property. So, you know.
And that's what you have to research is, how the property is developed, who's funding it.
Right.
And what you will learn in that situation, it's most likely was public funds, or some public investment to obtain this, to be able to qualify for a subsidy.
Right.
And that's what I'm saying here, is we have to make a decision tonight what path we want it to go down. Well, we don't have to make a decision tonight, we can put this on an agenda for another night to continue to think about it. But what's your path? And to me, the realistic path for me is, let's try to structure this where you get a developer to put up all the build money, build this structure, and then give us some units that are affordable for our residents. And then let them have the rest to do whatever they want, and to get their money back. That's, to me, the most realistic path I could foresee. But if we want to go down a different path, then the town has to put something on the table. You have to put some skin in the game, and do we have the ability to do that financially? We probably have to go get it override. Certainly, I'd be more than happy to take that on if that's what the people wanted to do and go fight for that. But we're at that crossroad, and what do you want to do? That's why I wanted to put us on the agenda tonight, because we got some thinking to do. I mean, am I, am I stating it wrong, and you, anyone else see it differently than that? Mrs. Minipelli?
I mean, I don't, I don't, I think if we're going to maintain it as our own, then I think that's where we would put some skin in the game, or subsidy as, as we're referring to. I think that there, there are opportunities, if you do put out an RFP, there would be potential response, you know, responding parties that might develop it, be it a building, or, you know, be it combined assisted living slash rental units and things like that. I think that, that you just have to put it out there and see. But I don't necessarily think we would be subsidizing anything that we're not going to be keeping as our own, much like Peabody Court. So if we're going to keep it, if that's what we want to now become our, our landlord, I could see that. Otherwise, we're going to sell it to a private developer who's going to come forward and tell us what they can put there. And our skin in the game is, here you go for a dollar. And there will be people that will, I think, respond to that. It's a, it's a money-making industry, otherwise people wouldn't be doing it. So, you know.
If I could add my concern.
Go to the podium if you want to be addressed, and I'll recognize you.
My concern is that, you know, there aren't a lot of affordable options here for the seniors in town, or handicapped, accessible options. I've been in many homes with home care aides when Sanborn Home Care was in business. Peabody Court isn't accessible handicap-wise, you can't even.
No.
Get into the bathrooms with a walker or wheelchair. Many of the residents that I saw in their homes, I was shocked, actually, to be a resident here for this many years, and to go into homes, and it looked great on the outside, but there's a lot of need for just another option. And these people are all here supporting the town. I think we owe it to the, the residents to give them an option to downsize or have, have something affordable.
Absolutely. You're highlighting why we need to do something.
Ms. Pacora, please.
Just state your name.
Sure, my name's Christine Pacora, and I live here in North Reading. I am a third-generation North Reading resident. My grandmother actually lived at 33 Peabody Court, she moved there in 1977, so she lived there for a very long time. So I'm very familiar with the apartments. I don't think they've changed much since, since I've been there.
Sable and only him on the floor.
Same, exactly. I think the only time anything gets changes is when somebody maybe passes away or moves to an assisted living facility. So I think that, that, first of all, this isn't the reason why I came up, because I, I just had one question. But I do think that the, if you look at where Peabody Court is now, it's between a beautiful bachelor school and the beautiful middle and high school. And we have these apartments that are for the elderly, who gave so much so that we could have these schools for our children. I think that, you know, the town really needs to move forward and, and do something for the people who helped our children. But what I did want to say is, once all this gets going, what's going to happen to the Peabody Court property? Is that something that you can use, you know, as a bargaining, what's going to happen to that land?
Well, I, obviously, we would have to make a decision what the reuse of that property would be.
No, we don't have any say. The state owns that property. The town of North Reading does not own Peabody Court.
Um.
It's state-owned, state-run.
Right.
It is not, we have no control over the property or the units or what happens with it. It has to be in concert with, in order to be.
Yeah.
Part of the equation.
I don't think that's going to be an issue, though. I can't imagine it's going to be an issue. Based on the conversations we had during their site visit, they certainly felt if we could find, identify another parcel to move it to, that they certainly wouldn't have no use for that property, and then it would be, we would just work it out. I don't think that's going to be an issue. I mean, what's the state going to do?
Well, what, you know, what has the state done to date? The state hasn't done anything for the town of North Reading at affordable senior housing in 45 years.
Right.
Or more. I mean, those, those units were built in 1960, I think. You know, so, and there's been nothing other than those four family units, those two duplexes, that's all that the state has invested in the town of North Reading for affordable housing for the residents of town of North Reading. That's it.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, for 50 years. You know, so, the state has fallen behind, state and federal government, fallen behind on affordable housing. And it's, you know, falling upon people of conscience here, trying to address the situation. And again, you have to partner with, I found, you know, with, with nonprofits in order to get things mobilized, moving, and get the grants or subsidies or breaks in the loans in order to make them cost-effective. The, the entrepreneur, it's not there for them. And again, if you look at the assisted living facilities now, and the ones that have the tiered systems, they don't expect, they, they don't accept Medicaid. They're all private pay. You know, Brooksbury, Brooksbury Village is a little bit different. What they do is, you buy the unit in there, and then as you progress along, if by the end of the time, what you paid for the unit could go towards your care towards the end, they have it all figured out, you know, as a, an equation as to how long they anticipate a resident's going to be there. You know, they will then accept Medicaid, you know. If you qualify for Mass Health and you run out of money, but then, the currents of that is very, very small. So they can afford to do that, because everything else is a cash flow, it works. You know, I've got two family members now that are in assisted living, but it's all private pay. As soon as their money runs out, you know, you're then looking at a nursing home, and you have to spend down to $2,000. So, and again, I don't know how the one in Reading operates, but it's obviously subsidized through state and federal money, managed by a property company, I mean, a property management group, but, you know, it's all state and federal money subsidized, you know. So it's like a Section 8 housing, where you, you get a certificate, you qualify for income, you pay one-third of your income towards it, and the rest of it's subsidized to the government. That doesn't happen generally with a new development model.
I, that was just my question, I, I didn't realize it was state. So, you know, I, I don't know what kind of control the town has over that later on, but it's.
Right, we, obviously, if we were able to move it, we would advocate to obtain that parcel from the state. But I, I don't see that as the biggest problem, I think us finding a solution is the big problem.
Oh, no, I definitely.
No, and I, and I know, and the state is frustrated, I'm frustrated with the state, because they're not giving us many options, or any options at all, actually, except occasionally a grant may come up. You know, when we had them out for our site visit, they didn't have any ideas. There is no money, and that's all they kept saying. If you could build it, move it, we'll help and support it, once it's in its location. But outside of that.
Would the state consider selling it to a private developer? You know, I, I think that's like so, another part of this picture, is what's that going to then end up looking like in the town center? I mean, you know, you all remember what the big deal was building the batch, and how difficult that was, because it was in the historical center. So, you know, are these, is that now going to sit empty? And how, you know, if it's all state-controlled.
Peabody Court's not part of the historic district, so.
Okay, oh, that's not, okay.
It's just outside.
All right, so anyway, that was, I just wanted to add that, I wasn't sure, thanks.
Sorry, missed meaning, I'll get to you. John, please.
My name is John Meany from North Reading. My, I grew up in North Reading, my parents, my mother still lives on Butler Street. My mother's 83, and I guess it's just a statement and a question. She really never, you know, in other towns, I guess, like Linfield and stuff like that, where my in-laws are from, there's a, a list you can get on and be available for senior housing, like affordable, I, I wouldn't even say affordable, maybe like somewhat market value, but at a, say, marketplace where they built some apartments and condos, and then they had built a, a building just for, I think it was over 55 or over 60. And there's a rate that you pay for your, say, was $400,000 maybe, or $385,000. And then, if you leave there at some point, whether you pass away or move on, the, it can only go up a certain percentage. So it's controlled pricing. It's not low-income housing, but it's someplace where your seniors can go. I may be wrong, but I don't think there's any place like that in North Reading. And there's a lot of families in North Reading that are not poor, that can afford a place like that, but really didn't have any place to move into, and my mother being one of them. And you might be able to get into a place now, say, at the new place they're building on 62, but I'm not sure that's controlled for, like, a list where the next people come and only, you know, it's almost like a market value, it's not market value, it's only goes up a certain percentage when it gets sold. So it would be affordable for the next level of seniors that come in and take over. So I'm not sure if we have anything like that in town, but that, that was kind of my question.
Mr. O'Leary? We, we do. Some of the 40B projects, which have been approved over the last several years, have an affordable component. Again, they're not rental prob, not the rental ones, but the, the condos. The subsidized units, again, are sold at below-market rates, when, when they're deemed affordable. And again, there's a cap on the resale value as to what can happen for the next sale. So there are units in North Reading that are subject to those, those caps, but you have to wait for the units to become vacant, and then.
So is there, is there a senior list that you can get on for that? Or is it anyone over 55, or is it, you have to be a town resident?
There's a small number of units that are, that the Housing Authority is aware of. There were a couple of units that the Housing Authority actually purchased, a couple years back out on Main Street, I think. I think they had two units, you know, that they utilized for the same purposes. But I think what they've been using them for is more, not for, for sale, but again, for rental people, low-income people, low-income seniors. It all depends on how the 40B units and developers were, what they agreed to and they're agreeing. But those units that are affordable, doesn't it is affordable, are sold at below-market rates, and can only be resold at below-market rates with a certain cap on, percentage of what the original owner paid for. So there are some of those available, but they're all handled through private, the deed restrictions, more through deed restrictions than any else.
And Linfield, as I know, there's a list where you get on, you put your name on it, if you are a resident or related to a Linfield resident, somehow related. But there is, like, there's hundreds of units available to the seniors. Linfield's a different town, I understand that, but there's the place right in downtown, right off the center, and then there's the place at Market Street. And I think there's actually one other place off, down, past the 99 down there, there's another facility. It might be a little bit different, but very similar, and they're very nice communities, but it's not for the people that are, you know, need all the support. It's people that want to stay in town, that have lived in town forever, like my parents, like myself, maybe someday.
But we, we had an opportunity not too long ago.
Yeah.
Just about a year ago, where Pulte had offered, this is for homeownership, a, an affordable component, you know, and the board opted to go for the 30 million instead of the 18 and a half, 18 and a half million dollars. But again, Pulte did, did provide an opportunity for this town to have over 55 subsidized housing for senior, for seniors. And the majority of the board opted out, will go for the 30 million, and deal with it later. But we did have that opportunity.
And maybe potentially there's another opportunity at the one down on Elm Street. I don't really know much enough about that, I just started hearing about it maybe a week ago.
The one down on Elm Street does have some affordable units in it, and when they are to be resold, they're going to be sold at below-market rates, with the deed restrictions on it.
Thank you.
Did you want to answer? Yeah, Mr. Media, just to answer your question, I've, as a real estate attorney, I've conveyed a number of those types of properties in the Boston area. Generally speaking, there's a municipal agency that will approve the people that are the new buyers. There is usually a list with each town, I'm not sure how North Reading does it, but other towns I've seen that. And as Mr. O'Leary stated, there are riders and the deed where they can only attain an appreciation off of their price. So if everything went up 10%, they can get 10% more when they sell. But they're sold on the market, but the buyers do have to be approved, and they're usually, the buyers are provided by the agency that's monitoring that particular housing unit.
And generally, it's the Housing Authority, and again, it's income-driven, which, which qualifies them for those affordable units.
So we're not sure if there is a list in North Reading that, that applies to that.
I don't have the answer to that question.
I think there may be.
There is a list. It's managed by our Regional Housing Services Office, and it's not for the public housing so much because the, the Housing Authority manages it. There is a list for people interested in units as, of the affordable units, as the subsidized units, as they become available. If there is anyone who would like to be on the list, they can contact me, and I can put them in touch with the Housing Services Office staff, who keeps a list of interested buyers. When these units come on the market and we become aware of them, those, you know, possible, potential buyers are contacted and made aware of lotteries and such that, that happen.
Great. Right down here, if you pass that microphone down, and then Mrs. Weldon, after you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, with regards to the RFP for this property, does it make sense to link the two properties together for a developer? As in, you know, develop the preferred solution for Three Carpenter being elderly housing, and perhaps provide more leeway on the Parsonage Lane project for, you know, non-elderly housing, or just, you know, a general apartment or condo development? That way, you're incentivizing the developer providing an avenue towards more profit to potentially get more units on Carpenter.
I know, Mr. Pierce, you said earlier, you'd rather us hold on to that property, don't do anything with it. But a great question.
Yeah, one of the, one of the thoughts on that was to limit the size, the sc, size and scope of the project on a, to something that we could afford, first of all. And second of all, if it looked like something could be worked out, you could look at using that piece of property. But that, that, that second piece of property is a little more, is a little more difficult to develop than the, than the 10 acres is too. So it might not be as much of an incentive because of the topography of it. So, so I wouldn't have any problem with that kind of a concept, if you wanted that kind of density in there, but you, but, you know, that's, that you're going to.
I think it's a point to understand, though, that this neighborhood has already endured a significant amount of development in a 40B project directly abutting this par, this property. And, you know, as we're proposing this, you know, and before we go off for an RFP, I think we need to, you know, we're brainstorming here, which is good in public, which is important, step in the right direction, but I think we need to include that neighborhood in relation to what they would deem an impact. And again, they're very familiar with dealing with the 40Bs, because a number of them are involved and are still living there, as far as the negotiations with the developer, and minimizing the impact on their neighborhood for the, what, what was proposed there. So same, same goes here, I mean, what you're doing is you're proposing a 40B here, basically.
What would be an impact?
The five acre, this is like a.
What would be a definition of an impact?
Well, you're talking, I don't care if it's 24 units or 124 units. You know, in a, in a residential single-family home with the, you know, anywhere from a half acre to acre lots in the neighborhood, and you're looking, you know, you're talking density, you're talking traffic, you know, entrance, egress, you know, how are people going to come through the neighborhoods? Is it going to be out on Central Street, or is it going to be coming down Parsonage, you know?
You know, what's it going to have for screening? What's the building going to look like? How high is it going to be? There's a whole host of, of impacts on neighborhoods, you know, everything from what's the building going to look like, how big, how many stories, and how much light is it going to throw off into the neighborhood?
Thank you. Mr. Wallner?
Because she's going to say the same thing as me, apart from this.
Need to go to the microphone.
I think I can give a little bit of a, I think Maureen already edited the transcript. I think I give a little enlightenment about what John Meaney was talking about. In Linfield, it's called Life, Linfield Initiative for Elders, Inc. They have a board of directors, and it started back in nineteen eighty-three with Center Village. When you're driving into Linfield Center, there used to be the Center School around nineteen, the early nineteen eighties, that school was shuttered, knocked down, and they built, basically, like apartments, they look like townhomes from, from the outside, they're three stories. And then they created Essex Village a few years later. There's sixty-six units there. There's sixty in Center Village. And then they created Colonial Village, which has forty-eight units. And then the fourth component of that, which this doesn't seem to be, have been caught up with, that there's the whole, the concept at Market Street, which is each, each one is a little more...
Upscale.
Upscale, yes, upscale. But there is, it is limited to town residents, are the only ones who can get on that list, and it's, the waiting list is a long time.
Can town own?
I'm sorry, how do we do something like that?
No, they, no, it's, they buy, they own it, and then the, when they resell it, they get that little bit of kick up, you know, you're limited to what your return is on your investment. Like, you're, if you make upgrades, like, say you bought an affordable unit, and you'd, you get all standard appliances. If you, on your own, put in stainless steel appliances, when you go to resell, you're not going to get the credit for stainless steel, because you did that on your own. You know, that, that's the way the forty Bs work, you know, so there's a, there's a, there's a formula that, you know, they go in, and they, Life goes in, and they, you know, freshen it up, update it, and then they sell it, and, you know, so it's...
Life, is Life a nonprofit?
It is a nonprofit, it has a, it has a board of directors, and they have a whole website page, just take a second to Google it.
So, that's, that's very helpful.
I'm sure the town, the town of Linfield will be able to tell you. Joe Maney is, he's the former town administrator over there, and he's like a longtime resident. And he's, he tried to get himself on the list, and he, you know, last I heard, he wasn't in one of the units yet, so he was still in his own house.
Mrs. Benipelli?
No, I was just curious if Maureen knew if they were, they're owned by the nonprofit, so I don't know.
They're all, they're owner-occupied.
I mean, I'm sorry, initially developed by the nonprofit, in other words.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
It's a private corporation?
Yeah, so the town sold to the corporation to build this specific...
And that's what I'm talking about. That would be, I think, something that...
Half-price, half-price market units, that you have to be two-year resident of Linfield or be a...
To the microphone.
So Rich Ballner, fifty-seven Lakeside, it's delightful to hear us talking about senior housing, the needs of seniors. I see some of the people that I meet with for the last four or five years here talking as well. The topic of senior housing is very thick, very detailed. There's many needs in the senior housing community. We've heard of one version, which is Life out of Linfield, they do a very proactive version of housing. It's definitely very much supported by the town, it's half-market units, it's only for Linfield residents, they make it town preference only. It has its advantages. What Kim describes is supporting services, it's one piece of the pie of people who are in need of services, and that, especially for a more, more remote location, that can be a very attractive thing as well. And what Steve is talking about is, Brooksby Village, what you were talking about is the continuous care retirement community, and that has four components. You move in independent living, meaning you come in healthy, then you can go to assisted living, you go to the memory care unit, or you go to nursing home. And what you hope to have happens actually is you come in independent, and you leave and get your money back at the end of the day, or your family does. Probably not realistic for this property, because it has to be pretty big, and Brooksby went belly-up about ten years ago, I think the residents had to take over ownership of that, so there's always been some question about how that model works in the long run, but it does work, and they seem to be stable over the last ten years. So the point is, is that, again, I feel like I'm repeating myself, because I've been in front of you guys too much recently, these are great discussions. We have a thorough study that came out of MAPC that goes over the housing. I think that, I'm suggesting that it's probably premature to throw out some money for an RFP at this point. I think it's good we have this on the table, I think it's great that we're talking about senior housing, but I think all of these elements have to work together. If you think of Life, an example, they created the, those apartments, those, those condos, and then they built the marketplace right next to it. Why did they do that? Was that an accident, or that, was that intended to be happening? That was an intentional thing. One fed the other. So in all these cases, we're talking about moving the chess pieces around, Kim talked about how, Christine did, about how, like, when you leave one building empty, what are you going to do with that? We're so close on having the MAPC study done, that it would be great to have one big, let's sit down and look at all the pieces, and try to put all the pieces together into one master plan, and then go off for your RFP, and do all the RFPs you have to do, but it feels like it's a little bit premature, although this is a great discussion, it's nice to know that this is fairly complicated, it's not an easy, not an easy thing to fix.
Yeah, but I believe the MA, the study you're doing will answer this question.
It won't.
It won't.
It's apples and oranges.
Right, we'll have to get the information. That's fine.
This study won't answer what you're saying. It will not accomplish what you're saying.
Well, there's, there's, there's numbers associated with people, seniors who...
Yeah, I think we have a good idea on that.
Give us some numbers.
But I'd like to move on, and before I give some homework assignments out, Mrs. Benipelli?
No, I just wanted to, just to kind of add to the idea of what's been talked about a little bit more. I know in Malden, that Malden actually had its own municipal-run nursing home called McFadden Manor, and it went out of business essentially, that there was a home rule to have it tried to be taken over, but it did, by a senior committee, but it didn't work out. And Malden ended up selling it to a company called Volunteers of America, which is a nonprofit that kind of refurbished or redid it to, very similar to what you were speaking about, or the, you know, the different levels of care, so someone could go in and get a unit who was fully able, or someone could go in and get a unit to, to have assisted living. But it's quite different, and this was very small, it was, you know, it was, it was a nursing home already, it was a very, it was a very tiny, tiny footprint, but, but there are companies out there that might definitely be interested in, in doing something with this parcel.
So, I think it's, I didn't expect us to come up with any solution tonight, I just wanted to get the conversation started. We have a lot more on the agenda, so I'd like to try to wrap, I am going to wrap it up now, but if we could leave it with a little bit of action on your end, and maybe, Michael, if you don't mind, maybe even reaching out to the Linfield town administrator to just sort of learn a little bit more from them. I know we have our CIT group, we have our Council on Aging, we have our Elderly Affairs, Department Head, you know, at some point, we've got to get everybody sitting around a table, I'd like to do that, and then try to come back here again jointly and continue this conversation after the New Year. So we'll figure out when that right time is, but if you could, in the meantime, look into a little bit of the nonprofit stuff, see if we can...
I mean, look into some of how the supportive housing would be funded, how much it would be, and, you know, how that would work. Also, and if, so we weren't going to be looking into Linfield Life, but did you say that you would rather reach out to...
I'm going to ask the town administrator to reach out, too, I think it would be good for his counterpart in Linfield to just sort of, you know, maybe connect us with the right people. And if we have to go do a site visit over there, people are happy to accompany everyone over here, so.
The Regional Services Office is probably going to have, going to know about this as well, about the Linfield situation, and I, I think that probably just touching base with them, giving them an idea, we've had this conversation, and that we're looking for some options, which is why I tried to pin you down a little on, on where you were with it, so that, because then they can come back, say, here are some options, give us some things to put on the table to look at.
And Mr., Representative Jones has already connected us, we already have the points of contact in the housing, so we know who to contact when we, and we will bring them into the fold as well. And then we can also start the conversations about what to do with the existing PPD court at some point as well, bringing them into the fold. Yes?
Just one more thing that I think, I think we, from my perspective, we should be possessive of this land for our residents, not necessarily for other people to come in, but just to have affordable housing for our seniors, or, do you know what I mean?
I understand, but the problem with that is you have to put up an investment. So if you have, if you want to do that, then I look forward to you proposing to us where that investment comes from, because that's the only way you get that done.
You may have a little bit more information based on your meetings, but I'm hoping that what we get from the people that are going to be researching this will help us inform how to put the RFP out.
If I could quickly for what Mr. Benipelli said, perhaps the question might be, how did Linfield start a nonprofit? Because maybe what we need to do is the same thing.
Maybe start a nonprofit.
Set up a nonprofit, look for funding for it for this particular item, and, and work it that way.
Yep, my great.
Is that the answer?
That's what we're going to do. So we'll get this back on the agenda again soon. Thank you for participating, and thank you for joining us this evening. Next, we're going to go to, we're going to do the Speedway real quick, if that's okay. We have these folks here, we don't want to make them wait any longer. Then we're going to go to two seventeen Main Street real quick, and then we're going to spend the rest of the evening with our friends from Water, okay? So change of manager, Michael?
Thank you.
Mrs. Benipelli, did you need...
I was wondering if I or we would be needed for two seventeen Main Street, before we all pack up and leave.
I would welcome the planning commissioners to stay for an update relative to that property.
This change of manager should be quick. And we're going to go right to two seventeen Main Street. Mr. Gilberto?
Mr. Chairman, through you. It looked like there might have been a question in the audience. Sorry, I'll let you be the chairman. Through you, we have a change of manager for Speedway located out on Main Street. I believe that they do have their attorney here representing them. This action is required in order for us to proceed with the renewal with the new manager designated, and I believe the individual is here this evening, I'll turn it over to Attorney Upton.
This has actually been an annual event, I think.
I believe it has been, yes.
Please, right to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Andrew Upton, representing Speedway. With me is Evigan Nieves, the proposed manager of record. Also with us is Sean Afalabi, the district manager for Speedway in this area. Evigan has been with Speedway for thirteen years, he's very experienced with the sale and of age-restricted products. He's worked at stores at Sultevaco for the last twelve years. He's been at this place for just about four months, and they've decided to promote him to the manager of record on a liquor license. He is tips-trained, he has completed Speedway's in-house liquor licensing and liquor sales training. He's a strict supervisor of his staff, they use scanning devices and mystery shoppers at the store. He's had a good record everywhere he's been, and we're glad to answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a change of manager for the package store wine and malt beverage license for Speedway, two thirty-one Main Street, from Nicholas Tarallo to Evigan Nieves.
Promotion, I have a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor? Aye opposed, unanimous. Thank you for coming in, sorry for the wait.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We, we all need to sign that? Okay. Next, we're going to go to discuss briefly, very briefly, two seventeen Main Street, I'm going to turn it over to town administrator, and then I may fill in a few little comments, and then we'll move on.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. As the community is aware, there's been an ongoing deliberation relative to the property located at two seventeen Main Street. The Select Board made a determination at the end of November that the property was unique for meeting the town's municipal needs, specifically relative to public safety and/or public works, operations, as well as potential relocation of some office locations that are, office functions that are currently here in the town hall, some of those offices, I should say. And the Select Board has been conducting deliberations in executive session, which have been publicly posted relative to this property, and we're pleased to report that subject to the agreement of a purchase and sale agreement between the town and the seller, we have made an offer that has been accepted for this property. It's important to note that there are a number of contingencies that are relative to this offer, and as I said in initially, it is subject to the agreement of a purchase and sale agreement between the town, specifically the board and the seller. But I'll give some highlights relative to the, the nature of the framework that we've come to an agreement on for the edification of the public. The proposed sale price for the property is three million, five hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. The sale is subject to the negotiation or agreement on a purchase and sales agreement, which the board will be asked to sign on behalf of the town before January sixteenth. In the framework, there would be a fifty-five day period for the town to conduct what I'll call due diligence, where we would be able to inspect the property and to make determinations relative to its suitability for public purposes. That would, our intention is to include evaluating the need for any work to be done on the property, so that it could be outfitted for municipal needs. And then, assuming the determination by the Select Board that it, property meets our needs, there would then be a window of time within which we would need to have a town meeting vote, and the intention is for, sorry?
Special town.
Special, excuse me, a special town meeting vote, which we're tentatively targeting for April second. The board's not going to be asked to call that town meeting at this point in time because of the due diligence period that we'll be going through, with a goal of, again, having that, that meeting on April, April second. One component of this is that we'll be requesting of the Finance Committee a reserve fund transfer to fund the evaluation of the, any improvements that may be required to the property, so that we'll be able to report to the community at town meeting what those improvements are likely to cost, and potentially ask for funding for those improvements at the same time as we request approval and authorization of funding to acquire the property. This obviously is something that is unanticipated from a scheduling standpoint. As we indicated in November, it is an opportunity that we were looking at informally, and obviously the board has made the determination based on the information that's been provided, that the property is indeed unique to address municipal needs. With that, the next step will be the request of the Finance Committee, which is going to be taken up at their meeting tomorrow evening, I believe, Mr. Albert, so we look forward to meeting with them, and I think that covers it.
Any brief questions? Brief, Mr. Ed, now you never say a brief.
I'm just going to make a statement.
Brief?
Yeah.
I have to put you on the clock?
Since you all just, you all kind of reappointed me as, on the Economic Development Committee as an associate, we're taking two point eight, eight acres out of the tax rolls by going here. We know that for the water, you need a very small parcel for a small building to inject chlorine, which is, you're going to build two very similar buildings, one on Central, and one somewhere on Main Street, but we're taking a big piece of our, and a beautiful property for redevelopment, for economic, in economic development. I mean, you come all the way around to Plymouth Street, there's another small parcel there that could connect the large parcel to Plymouth Street. I just... I just, I have an issue that way for this. I understand we have other needs, but I, you know, this suddenly popped up as we got these needs, let's spend the $3 million, buy this piece of property, but we forget that we're taking a big chunk of tax base out.
I think if, you, from a distance, I could see folks looking at it that way. But you have to understand that we've known for a long time that we do have some municipal needs in town, and one of them is the fire station. And the location of a fire station is very important for access to the main roads, to be able to respond quickly. So this debate about finding another location for the fire department's been long ongoing, even well before I arrived on this board now, almost nine years ago. So you have to attend to that solution at some point, and, you know, no one was out looking at this time. This building just came around, and based on the structure of this building, it could fit this need very, very nicely, because to go out and buy this piece of property for 3.0, or just say it's less than $3.5 million, you could never build that structure and keep it within the $3.5 million. It certainly could not happen. So this is an opportunity that's worth losing some economic development, and believe me, I am a big proponent of the economic development. But this is a sacrifice, I think, that's worthy of happening, because we need a centralized location. That's why we're doing this due diligence as well. We're gonna do some GIS mapping, we're going to look at where these calls are, how, where our call volume is, so we find the right central location for this fire department. We have to do all this due diligence in the next 55 days, and I think you will be happy and surprised once we provide this data, and you may feel differently when we're done. And maybe you won't, but that's okay. We, as a board, we have to make those decisions, and not everyone's gonna be happy with this. We understand it. That's why it's our responsibility to do the due diligence presented at a special town meeting, to justify our actions. And I believe there is no doubt in my mind that this is, I know it was off the radar, but when an opportunity came up like this, it was very hard for us to pass it up. Until we finish this due diligence process, I'd ask everyone to just give us the latitude to let us go through this process, see what we present at special town meeting. And we're certainly gonna hold some workshops between now and special town meeting to share the information as it becomes available, so you can have more questions, and we can vet it, and vet ourselves, and make sure we are prepared on April 2nd. Okay, so I'm gonna move on. I'm going to bring up-
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment in relation to this. Couple of things. What is, I supported going forward with feasibility study and requesting of the Finance Committee to, you know, take a look at it. But, you know, I too am somewhat of a skeptic, but at the same time, you know, this is an opportunity that's presented itself, and the timing is such that we have to either fish or cut bait. And so the majority of the Board has decided to, you know, let's go fishing for a little bit here and see what, see what bites. So I think it's important that we be given the opportunity, and I think we have responsibility to do the due diligence before we pass on this opportunity. I think the way that the structure of the purchase and sale agreement, as will be structured, provides the town with a marvelous opportunity to take a look at it, and also low risk in relation to the necessity to actually exercise the option to purchase. So, you know, just a few questions. Does it fit, and how does it fit into our master plan? Those types of things. Methodology and the method of financing, the purchase and the build-out, I'm very concerned about, as everybody here is, and that's gonna be vetted prior to town meeting. And then, again, we await to, well, we have some ideas, you know, internally, within Town Hall as to what the potential uses are, potentially could be. I think this study will assist us in seeing what will fit. So nothing's been cast in stone here, but I think it's just an opportunity that we saw, and an opportunity that we think we should avail ourselves of, as far as taking a look and expecting some funds to, to see what the potential is there. But again, we're not at risk of losing any money other than what we spend on these feasibility studies and consultants. So that being said, we're gonna have a whole lot of discussion about it between now and April 2nd.
We won't do it in a vacuum.
One quick point, I'll be quick.
Yes, sir.
Every single master plan we've ever done since I've been on the planning board has included a fire station of some kind on the west side of town.
And we're hoping our GIS mapping will help us even identify that even more.
I mean, just so somebody won't think that it's something you just thought up, you know? I mean, it's been thought about for many, many, many years.
Yes, sir.
And the place has been looked for for it.
Yep. And anytime anyone's interested in going to our existing fire station, even though we just made a significant capital investment to clean it up, to put a Band-Aid on it, go look at it, go, go visit it, you know? And our call volume isn't going down, it's going up, and, you know, it's, it's time. And the opportunity is good. But again, it's on us in the next 55 days to prove to this community that this is a worthy investment, and our board members too, because there is some skepticism on this board as well. Okay, next, we're going to have the discussion on the water project and update on the water replacement project. And I want to apologize to Mark Clark and your, your team for the delay in getting you up to the podium this evening. I apologize.
I guess the question is, Mr. Chairman, which would you like to hear first?
I think the best thing to do is the water meter replacement program real quick, and then we'll get into the water project, and wrap it up that way, if you don't mind? Because I think, I assume the water meter replacement program's gonna be pretty vanilla, hopefully. Thanks again, everyone.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Captain, thanks very much for all your dedication, the previous guidance. That is very, very solid, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Sorry, Mark, we'll just give it a minute to the, to Hayden slowly leave. Boy, I give you a hot time tonight. You're used to it.
I just had a break now.
I'm glad you did.
Thank you.
I'm tracking with you. Can I?
Good evening.
Mr. Clark?
All right, good evening. This is an update on the water meter project, hoping to be quick on it. So the project itself, it's to replace all the existing water meters in town with this new AMI, which means Advanced Metering Infrastructure System. We have 4,853 commercial and residential meters, most of which date back to the last meter replacement in the early 1990s. Obviously, there's been a lot of development since then, so some of the homes have newer meters. Some of the commercial properties actually have older meters than that. So we're trying to just basically bring everything up to a current generation. North Reading, we traditionally wait till there's a tried and true system out there and then upgrade to that. Up at the top, you can see our, kind of our most recent upgrade. It was a Neptune meter with the black ARB boxes. That's what most people have had on the outside of their houses for, for a long time. She brought one. So these have been in service since the early 1990s. This one actually, we just took out today, just changed the meter today. Basically, the, the reading system with this is, we'd have to go out to these, open them up, there's a series of pins inside, we plug a gun on, it reads the account number and the meter reading, downloads it to our system. Functional system, it's been in, in service for 27, 28 years, and again, this one was sitting on that house for that long, working fine until we took it away. But we're going to the newer system, which you see on the bottom, which again is a Neptune meter with a radio reading device on the outside of the house. That's what that gray box is, if you see it on the outside of your house. I actually have one of those as well. And these, we've actually been installing radios for about seven years here in North Reading, so any new construction, any meter replacements, we're changing these out. The system we've used is what's known as a drive-by system, so we have kind of this big radio receiver that we drive down the street with. It bounces off, it has about an 800-foot radius that'll read on. So if I turn this on today, it'll read everything within about 800 feet of Town Hall here.
Yeah, we used to use that as icon.
This project was approved a few years ago at town meeting. It's funded through the Water Enterprise. There's basically four kind of parties involved, the town of North Reading, I have Margaret McCarthy from Weston and Sampson, who's been our engineer, she's with us here in the audience today. We have Thai Sales, which is basically the meter supplier and the, the radio supplier. And then the people that have been dealing with you at your homes in North Reading have been Thels Engineering, but really USI Services, which is a subcontractor to them. They're the people that were on the postcard that you've called to make the, make the appointments, they're the people who are actually in the homes to do those meter replacements. So what is AMI? It's, it's, you know, you hear the term smart meter as well. So it basically takes and, rather than have us come out to your house to read it, it basically reads itself, stores the readings, and then once a day, that information is transmitted through communication infrastructure. We basically have some repeaters on the three water towers and on a couple of power poles in town, that basically read all the information once a day, and it dumps to a dedicated server here in, in Town Hall. So we're getting, we're actually getting reads from the whole town every day. We're actually getting hourly reads from the whole town, and that's kind of one of the big benefits of this. So the old meter reading system, if you saw your bills, we always billed you to the nearest 1,000 gallons, because that was as close as the older meters would allow us to read. The new meter reading system, we can read down to a tenth of a gallon, so it's 10,000 times more resolution on the meter reading. The frequency, we would walk the town four times a year, so we would get four meter readings per year. The newer system, we're getting 24 meter readings every day, so we're up to 8,760 points of data every year. Meter reading technology, we had the old pin blocks. As I mentioned, we have some drive-by radios in. There's still some manual reading meters where we'd have to go out and write down the reading and bring it back, and there's some, some basically non-standard meters in town, mostly at the Greens. The Greens kind of did an upgrade on their system a few years back that was not really the standard we have in town. New meter reading system, again, it's a fixed network. The collectors are on the towers, and they sit there. We can actually sit here in Town Hall and do an on-demand reading, so if Ms. Manipelli was selling her house, we could sit here and read your reader. We don't have to get up and drive out and do the meter reading at your house for that. Just a sum, a summary of where we are. So we break the town into basically 12 books, they're geographic. Book one would be the Martins Pond area, book 12 would be the Greens, book 13 is just the commercial accounts, which are scattered throughout towns. Again, we have 4,853 meters. To November 30th, we had installed about 88.4% of those with new meters. How we're doing it, there were three sets of mailings, three postcards that went out, notice one, two, and three. Those have all been mailed to every section in town. There were actually some door hangers or some on-call that they tried to, to just make unscheduled appointments as they were in town. They were required to actually do three door knocks at each property to try to get meters replaced. And then the last thing we've been doing is, those that have not responded, we've sent certified mailings to a portion of them. We're actually looking to, just after the first of the year, go and do certified mailings to anyone that hasn't received those as yet. That 93.5% down at the bottom, that's the response rate for those that have received the certified mailing. So overall, we're at about 88%. We expect to get at least another 5% or 6% on those, on the, on the overall project from that, that last set of certified mailings we're gonna do. Again, how has this progressed? May and April, we basically contacted a number of people, mostly Town Hall employees, asked them to take part in our pilot program, and went out and threw about 25 meters in just to test the program. May, June, and July, they ramped up and began installing about a little over 400 meters a month. August, September, and October, you can see the, kind of the big increases there. Now we're getting to the point where we're at the kind of 90% are in, and it's really starting to tail off. They've actually had weeks where they, they haven't scheduled appointments here, and they've gone from, in October, they had five installers in town, pretty much full-time, they're down to one installer in town on kind of a every-other-week basis at this point. Just to give you a quick update, what are the issues we run into with the project? I'm gonna, this is kind of a scary-looking piece of pipe. Iron service line issue. So iron services in North Reading date back to pre-1960. In 1960, we began using copper, but I don't know if you can see this. This was a 3/4-inch pipe. You can see it's down to about a quarter of an inch of actual flow area inside the pipe. What happens is the iron actually dissolves itself and then tuberculates. It's almost like, I always call it hardening of the arteries. It chokes itself off inside. Again, we've replaced about 4,200 meters. We broke one iron service pipe, and this is the one. So iron service pipes, we're basically telling people, look, we're not gonna touch the iron service pipe. We come in and break a pipe in your home, we're kind of responsible for that, even though it's, it's your pipe. So we will be, I'll explain a little how we're gonna deal with that. Other things that we've had are leaking, leaks on the lines. We don't want to touch lines with leaks on, because then again, people will tell us we caused the leak. So if we come in and see the lines dripping or, or a little bit wet, we're not gonna do to touch that. Access issues, confined spaces, meters that have, you know, they've since built walls in front of the meter, it's behind your furnace, it's behind an oil tank, things we just can't, simply can't get at. There's some non-standard installations, scheduling issues, customers that need special times, customers that have scheduled and then are not home when we come to, to show up, people just with, you know, sicknesses or other personal issues that we're, we're trying to work around. And again, what we're trying to do is, you know, we're literally trying to get in every single property in town, so you can imagine there's a few issues with those. Surprising number of vacant and bank-owned homes in town. There's one home, one street, just a little ways away from here, that actually has three houses in a row that are either vacant or, they're at some stage of the demo process. So a lot of houses in, a lot of, the smaller lots in North Reading sell, people tear the house down and look to build another house. Town issues, the water needs to be shut off at the street. We've been working with the contractor to do that as quick as we can. It's just, some of those we need to go back and revisit. The number one issue we've had is non-responsive customers. The three mailings, the three door knocks, and the certified mailing, and we still have people that are not letting us come in to change the, the meters. Again, just kind of, here's a, a bad situation. If I can get this on. But what you see coming out of the ground there is an iron pipe. It looks very rusted. There's actually a coupling right where it comes out of the, the cement in the floor. You can see how rough the, the pipe is as it comes up out of the floor. An old gate valve, you can see the corrosion on the old gate valve. That indicates there probably was a leak there at one time. If we touch that and close that, it's probably gonna leak. It may break in the closed position. If we open it back up, it may continue to leak. Something like that is something we don't want to touch, because the iron pipe, the broken closed gate valve, or the leaking gate valve, customers will come back and, you know, look to the town. So we're gonna, I'll explain in a second how we're gonna try to deal with those. So where are we again? We're in December of 2018. USI is continuing to make appointments and continue to install water meters. So what we're looking to do, beginning fairly soon, is actually as a condition of doing final water bills, if we see that you have an old meter in the house, we're gonna basically require that you let us come in and replace the water meter as a condition of doing that final water bill. Again, we're gonna do that last group of certified letters to people who have not received the mailing in the past. We will be sending a letter to people with those iron service lines that we're not looking to touch, basically telling them they have a, you know, a point to make repairs or make changes to that of November 15th. Through January, we'll continue to schedule regular appointments. At some point in January or February, the contractors basically are gonna have met most of their requirements, so they've gotta do those, you know, those six notifications plus that certified notice. At some point, they're gonna be done with all that, and we're gonna be left with a, a pool of meters that have not been installed. What we would be recommending, we talked about this back when we set the rates, is in February, basically to start issuing bills that include that special meter reading fee if we haven't changed your meter out. There probably will be some pushback on that, but again, that's what we said we want to do, and we're at the point where we know who hasn't-
What's that rate again?
It was $50. Now, the question was, what was the period of the $50? So I think some had suggested it be $50 per week or $50 per quarter.
I thought it was per reading.
Per reading. Per reading, but is that every day, is that every quarter, so?
I think we discussed weekly, didn't we? I don't know. Maybe? I can't remember. Been so long.
And then, you know, through February, March, Thels will continue to work on doing punch list type items, continue to do the appointments. I do want to emphasize this, there is a number you can call. If you haven't done your, had your meter installed, you want to avoid that charge, there's a number right there, 888-709-9944. They're still scheduling appointments, and they'd be happy to talk to you.
And I just really wanted to go quickly through this. So one of the great benefits to the homeowner of this project is the ability to track your own water usage. And this website is live now, you can actually go there and log into this. It'll be looking for your account number and your customer ID, which you can find on your water bill. It'll ask for your ZIP code, and then you can log into this. I was gonna do a live demo, but I've actually just captured some, some screenshots for this, but it's a, it's a great-
But it's a, it's a great thing and I'm going to try and explain why it's a great thing. So this is actually Town Hall. This is kind of the level of detail you can get on what's coming back to us for data. You can look at every year, every two months, every two weeks, every week, or every day in terms of what the water usage is. And what you're seeing here for Town Hall is you're seeing the last week of water use. Basically, Sunday, December 9th, not a lot of water use in Town Hall. That's what you'd expect. We're closed on Sunday. And then in Monday morning, you see no use, but then you see it ramp up as in the early morning, back down, same thing Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So it's showing you actually each hourly water use here. And then again, on Saturday, we have no water use, which is kind of a good thing. That's what you would expect to see for a building like this. You can actually drill down. So that prior screen was the weekly look at Town Hall. This is a daily look and it's last December, or last Thursday, December 13th, it shows you every hour of the day. Where you, you know, you can point and click and drag this little balloon. It's showing you that from 1:00 to 2:00 in the morning, zero gallons pass through the meter at Town Hall. That's a good thing. You don't want water passing through your meter at 2:00 in the morning. What this is showing you, so orange is a possible leak. This is a different building, but what it's showing you is in the middle of the night, there is, you know, about a gallon a minute passing through and it's consistent all night long. And if you go to the next night, there's still a gallon a minute. So there's some kind of leak going through that water meter. This is set up so that it can actually notify you. If you sign into this, you can get notified that, hey, we think there's a leak on your property and based on the volume of the leak, we think it might be a leaky toilet. You might want to take these steps to try to look at that. So before you get the high bill, it's kind of a good thing. Here's a, here's a classic one. What you see is about 50 gallons an hour passing through this meter all the way up until sometime on November 7th. This gentleman came in and talked to me, didn't know why his water bill was high and we backed into this and looked at it. And he, I asked him, did you do something on November 7th? And he said, ah, yeah, that was about the time I went and shut the valve to my sprinkler system off. His sprinkler system wasn't running, but he had a leak somewhere outside his house on his sprinkler system that was leaking at about 50 gallons an hour, which is a lot of water. And, you know, he shut that off and there it shows. If you see right here in the middle of the graph, you know, his usage dropped way off once he shut that valve. A lot of good information can come out of it. Again, this is the same leak just showing you on it, you know, that day where he shut it off. It's over, this is, this line right here is 50 gallons an hour. So he's at or above 50 gallons an hour until he shuts that valve outside. First question we always ask when people call to complain about their water bills is, do you irrigate your lawn? Two responses we always get are, I don't have a swimming pool and the town has a water ban on. That's not the question. The question, did you water your lawn? You can go back to this and look at this. This is, if you look at the right hand, or the left-hand side, that's how many gallons per day are passing through this guy's meter. Those spikes are over 3,000 gallons a day. If you look at that, it's Monday, July 2nd, Tuesday, very little use, then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, skip Saturday and Sunday, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. He's got his sprinkler system coming on and watering 3,000 gallons a day, four days a week. Not in compliance with our watering schedule, but that's why his water bill is so high. If you look at his low points, they're 200 gallons a day. So he's taken 15 times his average daily use and dumping it on his lawn four times a week. We've, again, we've had this discussion with a bunch of people who come in and they're yelling about their water bill until we show them this. And, you know, the classic response that I love is, a woman came in and she said, oh, I should probably stop yelling at you and go home and yell at my husband instead. And I said, yep, thank you very much. Again, just drilling into the hourly use for that same thing. You could see at 4:00 in the morning, their sprinkler system comes on and he uses 500 gallons an hour for the next five hours. And no matter which day of those high-peak days I look at, that pattern is right there. That's classic indication that they're just using their sprinkler over and over again. What this can do is, if, again, you can sign in and if your bill is going to be higher, projects your bill is going to be high, it can notify you. You can actually go in here and see your data. Again, what we had with the old system was on, on May 1st, we knew what your meter reading read. On August 1st, we knew what your meter reading read. We could ask you, we could say, it looks like you're watering your grass, but this, you know, this is telling us pretty clearly what's going on and it can tell the homeowner. It's just so much better at, at answering those types of questions. So this is something I'm very excited about and I just very much would encourage people to go in, explore it a little bit. It does have recommendations. It'll take a look at your use and it'll, you know, it can't tell exactly how you're using the water, but it can, you know, it can give you some good recommendations. Very good at promoting the, the water conservation. Again, as you guys remember, we, we've had water bans over the years. We go out, we drive the town at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning to try to see who's watering their grass. We don't have to do that anymore. I mean, we've got very clear evidence of what's going on.
Can you put that website back up again?
Sure.
It's not on our town website, the link to it?
There will be shortly.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Gilbert.
So I believe it, the, the interface just became active recently, Mark.
It's only been within about the last seven days that it's been active. I will, I will say this as kind of a caveat. I know there's at least one gentleman in town that's been on it every single day trying to drill into it. And there is a delay between your meter getting installed and the data being available on the website. And it can be up to six weeks. So I know, because we could, you could go in and see who's logging in and trying to see the data. I don't want people to be discouraged. It is there and, you know, for the majority of the time, probably 3,000-plus of the accounts, the data is there live and it is coming for others. Again, if you haven't changed your meter, this can, this can help you not have huge water bills in the future. I'm just going to say this because Warren was here and Warren left. Warren came in last week and he's like, you know, I did a Title V inspection on this house. The house is vacant, but the system's flooded. I don't know what's going on. We called up the account for it and you could see the house is vacant, there's no usage. But at one point, about three weeks before he did his Title V inspection, someone must have come and flushed the toilet and the flapper valve didn't seat. Because all of a sudden, he's got 600 gallons a day from an empty house going into his septic system. Someone came in about a day before Warren went out there and that sealed itself, but it had been flooded for three weeks with 700 gallons a day of water. And, you know, Warren basically was going to have to recommend, you need a new system because there's something wrong with your system. But no, it wasn't that. There was a leak that was just flooding out the end.
Mark, would it be possible to put that website on the bill?
Yep, we can do that.
Educate people, hey, check this out.
Yep.
This is great. There we go. So I think I would like to get an update as we get into the, you know, first quarter of next year or end of the first quarter next year, where we are with people getting, getting these completed. And we just need to get more awareness and I don't know what we do, but at some point...
Reminiscent fine structure.
I think that's some, because this is, it's very labor-intensive. People don't have an appreciation for, we have a small few that are going to cause us to have a lot more manual for them. It's going to be expensive for them.
And if you can imagine, it's not a matter of walking down the street and we have to read every one of these houses. No, we have to know which houses we have to hit and which houses we have to skip. So it's a matter of, you know, the meter reader has to look at a list and make sure he catches those houses that don't have the new meters.
You know, the whole system is evolving and you have to apply your resources to where the work is now and it's changing. And then what do we do with those meters? As you reassign other people to do these more technology things, we don't have those resources available if we're walking around. So that's a labor-intensive project we have to, or person we have to keep available. And, you know, I know there's probably some people that just say, I don't care, I've never changed my meter. Well, we may have a few of those, but there's got to be a way for us to recoup our costs. So we made this significant investment. Please keep us up to date. But thank you.
Sure.
This is a good, good summary. Any questions for Mark before we go into the water project? Michael, any, or guess, over to Patrick.
I think that Mark is finishing up and then Pat, are you going to, you're going next?
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So I just wanted to give you an update and schedule on the ongoing water project, what I call the connection to Andover project. You recall, I have Rob Williamson here from Wright Pierce. He's our consultant in this effort and he was kind enough to put together this critical path schedule for us. And I caught, I sort of broke that out into non-engineering language for us in the next few slides. You see, Rob started here with the execution of the 99-year IMA with Andover. So we agreed with Andover that we were going to buy water from them for the next 99 years. You recall, the original effort was to pursue a source of water from the south and we decided to change that. So we were, we had to file a notice of project change. We recently filed that. Let me see if I can get to the next slide. So we filed the notice of project change in October. The official filing date or submission date for that was in November. There's a 20, 20-day period for comment on that. So we can still receive comments until December 28th, just based on the math, that's the final date. With those comments, we can incorporate those and submit our final FEIR in May and hopefully get our final FEIR certificate in June of 2019. We'll have our inter-basin transfer agreement, public hearings in July and Sep, from July to September of 2019 and hopefully an inter-basin transfer agreement certificate in March of 2020.
Can you explain the IBTA, what, where's that held, what's the need for it? Is there any risk with those hearings?
So, well, it's a, it's a MIPA process, so it's through the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office. And basically what it serves to do is it tries to account for what is used within a certain watershed. So we're, we're taking water from a watershed and distributing it into another watershed. So essentially, we're taking water from the, where Andover's getting their water from, a separate watershed, and where through our septic systems and other sources, we're distributing into a different, into a different watershed. So they try to have, what they're trying to do and what they're trying to ensure is that there's, there's a balance in each watershed. So when you're doing that, you need to, you need to provide these reports which consider all the different possibilities, all of your different options, and they want to make sure that you've done your due diligence and that this is the best option. So you'll have to do some, some inter-basin sort of calculations on where the water's going and how that's on. And again, Rob can speak to the, to the depths of what the, what the, what the risks are and what those hearings may, may present to us if we, if we're not having success. I don't know, Rob, if you have any input in that.
Yeah. Yeah, for this process, there's probably not a lot of risk. The IBTA process actually starts with the filing of the FEIR. They consider that their application. So as the FEIR is being reviewed by MIPA, the IBTA people are also reviewing the FEIR for its applicability to the inter-basin transfer permit. So once you get your, your final, the final FEIR certificate, I don't want to say it's, it's like clockwork, but it's just a process that they have to go through and allow people to comment. We shouldn't have a problem here because we're taking from a donor basin that's rich in water and we're putting it into a basin that we're in the hip situation that's poor. So I don't see that there'll be a lot of risk here.
Thank you. Mr. Masary.
Just to comment, Mike, currently, we have an inter-basin transfer
Yep.
From Andover to North Reading of about 1.55 million gallons per day. So this is related to increasing it to up to between 2.7 and 3 million gallons a day.
Yep. I was really with that. I was just more concerned about the public hearings and, you know, it was, it's going to be a painstaking process since nothing's been to be non-painstaking all the way up till now. So that's good. I'm glad it's just more of a...
It's going to be time-consuming, but not too risky.
Are they held here?
One, there's one held in this basin, so partly held here, and then there'll be one held in another basin, presumably in Andover.
In Andover.
And you hope that, so through the FEIR process, we have public hearings on this whole project. You hope that all the big issues have already been flushed out before you get to the public hearing process for the IBTA.
Thank you.
So just want to talk a little bit about the design and construction portion of this as it relates to the chlorination facilities. We're going to need, there's two connections, interconnections with Andover. One's on Central Street and one's on Main Street. There's a town-owned, so there's going to be two new chlorination systems that upgrade or increase the chlorination available in the water as it crosses from Andover. The town owns a piece of property on Central Street. That will be the first location. And we're currently pursuing an additional location on Main Street. We've been in discussions with a couple of different property owners there and those are ongoing and promising and positive. We're hoping to have those secured or at least have a reasonable agreement, agreement in January, February of next year. With that, we'll be able to pursue survey, geotechnical, preliminary design immediately after that. Hopefully have final design on those, on those locations in May. We'll submit those designs for comment and approval to Mass DOP, Mass DEP shortly thereafter. Hopefully receive final approval from DEP in July of 2019. Go out to bid the following spring for construction, leading that, leading for, starting in that summer and proceeding through the fall and winter into the next spring.
Add to a little bit. Actually, some of the work on the sites has already begun. So we've already done wetland flagging. That happened a couple of weeks ago, once we knew that the, this second site looks like it was going to be a go. Tomorrow, there's a driller moving into each site. They're starting at Central Street. We're doing one geotechnical boring in each site that's needed for the design of the buildings. So we'll do Central Street tomorrow and probably move to the other property on, what will that be, Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday? And then survey, they were going to start survey before Christmas, but we added some more scope. So they're going to do survey January 2nd, 3rd, and possibly the 4th. So they'll pick up the two sites and then they're picking up more wetland flagging for some water main projects that Pat's going to talk about in a second here as well.
So Rob mentioned, we're also, a portion of this project involves the upgrade or replacement of some water mains in town, down Main Street and, and North Street. So the first step in that process is to submit a road opening, a street opening permit with Mass DOT. We have to do some borings to understand what's, what's in the roadways that we plan to put the water main in. That'll help us put together a comprehensive bid and understand what the costs are going to be associated with that project. So we're hoping to have those done in the spring with the final design of those projects in July. We'll submit the final design to DEP, hopefully receive approval from them in the fall and begin bidding and construction soon thereafter for completion in 2020. And then there was one last thing we wanted to talk about recently. There's been, you may have seen some newspaper articles and some discussion about sewer overflows that end up in the, in the Merrimack River. That's always, obviously a concern for some people is that's going to be a source of water for us. So in an effort to, to give a level of comfort for the folks that are getting that water, we wanted to just talk about the water treatment processes that are in place in Andover. And I'm going to defer to Rob to that and just get a little bit more understanding of how that works.
Sure. So real quick, I just put a little flow chart together just kind of to show everyone where the water originates from and how Andover treats it and how it's protected and treated and very safe by the time it arrives in North, North Reading. So Andover gets their water from, actually from Haggots Pond. It's a pond right next to where the treatment plant is. And Haggots Pond does not have the, the sufficient volume to supply the community throughout the whole year. So they supplement Haggots Pond with two other sources, one being Fishbrook and one being the Merrimack River. They have a pumping station that pumps from both and pumps into Haggots Pond. So in terms of treatment, one of the first steps that happens... So in terms of treatment, one of the first steps that happens is the water that does come from the Merrimack or Fishbrook, there's a natural settling process that happens in the pond itself. So all water has some sediment in it of some kind. Because the pond is so large and its detention time, and that's the time a drop of water sits in the pond before it's actually treated, it's quite long. It's a long period of time before a drop of water moves through there. There's natural settling of any sediments that are in the water. But once they pull the water, so they pump the water from Haggots Pond into the treatment plant, and there's a number of steps that it goes through to purify it. First thing they do is they use ozonation, ozone, and that acts to oxidize particles that are in the water, kind of puts them in a stable state that they can be handled better with other treatment process, and they also add chlorine for disinfection. And you're going to see the word chlorine come up a number of times. The second step that, once the water goes through the ozonation process, then they add all the chemicals for all the different things that they're trying to do to the water. They add a coagulant. What that is, is a chemical that makes bigger particles in the water, that's heavier than those particles, and that, those particles settle out in that third step, sedimentation. So these coagulants are essentially taking any particles that are floating in the water, traps them, and then they settle out in the bottom of the basin and are removed from the water. They also add more chemicals for another oxidation process, and they, can't even read this, and then they add more chlorine as well, so they're doing disinfection again. I mentioned the settling process, sedimentation process, where the majority of the particulates are taken out of the water. After it flows through the sedimentation process, it goes through a filtration process. This is another barrier. So any remaining very fine particles are removed through the filtration process. And then, once it goes through filtration, that's called the finished water. It's essentially suitable for drinking at that point. They add some chemicals just to treat the water for pH and things like that, but they also add chlorine again. So it's the third step in the bacteria process. So this is considered a very, very robust process, and the finished product you're left with is very high-quality water. They have to meet, them as well as anyone who provides drinking water to the public has to meet all sorts of both federal and state regulations in terms of supplying water to the public. So you get, you end up with a very high-quality product.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I think there's a great description of how the system is set up, delivering water from the Merrimack River ultimately here to North Reading. I just want to ask the water superintendent to kind of speak to the things that we learned over the past six or eight months about how Andover actually operates that system, because I think that's also important.
Sure. As Rob mentioned, Haggots Pond has a drainage area. It's not sufficient to supply the town forever, but they can subsist off the pond for an extended period of time. So if there is an issue on the Merrimack River, the upstream of Andover where they take in, communities upstream notify communities downstream if they have a discharge event, and Andover has the ability to then shut off that intake. They don't have to take water 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. If you think about what's causing these overflow events, it's generally high-flow periods. High-flow periods in the river are also periods where the pond is kind of recharging itself more too, because you're getting heavy rain there. So that tends to bring the pond up, lessening the need to draw from the river. So if they are notified that they have an event upstream that might trigger some water quality issues coming to them, they have a vested interest in protecting their pond, so they'll shut off that intake for that time. The other thing, and Rob touched on this a bit, but I just want to talk about, what's coming out of that plant is very high-quality water, and it's tested daily. I know there's some reports out there that, you know, seem to suggest people are getting sick after these sewage events. I don't see any way that the drinking water can be causing that level of illness. So we test for what's called total coliform bacteria in the drinking water. Total coliform is not something that'll make you sick. It's an indicator bacteria. It's used before looking for fecal bacteria with the thought process, if there's no total coliform in the water, there can't be any fecal coliform in the water. So before there can be, you know, a high contamination issue, you would see something in the drinking water. Andover is very, very good about testing their drinking water and making sure that it meets all standards. If there, you know, if there was any indication, again, they don't draw direct from the Merrimack River, but even the communities that do, none of them are having issues with the water coming out of their treatment plants. If there was, the state DEP would be jumping all over, all over the water treatment people. So we've been drinking Andover water since at least the 1950s. It is recognized as one of the highest-quality waters in the state. I'm personally very confident, and I drink it every day that I'm here.
Mr. Messer.
He answered the question.
He answered the question.
We made the point.
Thank you. Right. Please continue.
That's basically all I had, so.
So do we have a chart like this that basically, after the chemical addition there, the town line, and then what happens to the water once it enters a water town line?
So basically, water we're taking from Andover right now, on Main Street, we don't have the ability to rechlorinate that water. That's one of the reasons we're looking for a piece of property to add an additional chlorination facility. We're not looking to add it because the water coming in from Andover doesn't meet drinking water standards. What we have to do is, North Reading is, all the way out at the far end of our system, which would be out, say, by the Thompson Country Club, as far removed as from our Andover sources are, we have to meet federal and state drinking water requirements out there. So in the summertime, when the temperature's up, the water temperature's up, the chlorine levels at the end of our system would be zero. So we're looking to basically add just that additional chlorine dose at the two interconnections at the town lines in order to just further safeguard. So most, almost every community adds chlorine or chloramines to their, which is a combination of chlorine and ammonia, to their drinking water. It's basically to prevent against any type of microbial growth out in your distribution system, and that's what we would be looking to do. It would provide another level of safety to the drinking water, but the water Andover is supplying us now is, you know, bacteria-free. It's clean, good drinking water at this point, so.
Thank you. Anything else? So it looks like we're on pace. Mr. Messer and Mr. O'Leary have continued to keep us updated on the location, potential location for this chlorination facility, which I think is great. I'm glad we've been able to identify it. It sounds like it's on a positive path, which fits in line with your timeline that you presented tonight, so. When you get to that point in your timeline, you've identified a location, did you say you were going to go out to these locations and do borings to make sure the facility can?
We've already been allowed preliminarily by the owners of the property to go out and start doing borings already.
Great. So we'll have all the full knowledge if, you know, the property is suitable for what we want to do.
Exactly, because we need, as part of the FEIR process, we have to provide almost a full design for all the different aspects of the project. So we need to have these, at least for the stations, we have to have at least the site design done to submit with the FEIR so they can evaluate what, if there are any environmental impacts as a result of the project.
So my last question for the evening goes along with, we've changed course, went down this floor, we've changed budgets because we've changed course. Are we going to stay within budget? Do you foresee any issue with our budget that we have appropriated from town meeting to complete the entire process?
I would say we're still working just on draft budgets right now. We're still in the very early stages of understanding what all the aspects of the project are. So we just started talking about that last week, where we are, so I don't have a firm answer for you. I know we're refining that.
Do you foresee that we may have to go back to town meeting?
We're hoping not.
We hope not, exactly. Exactly.
And right now, it's still preliminary, you know, his cost estimates to date have been extremely conservative, so it might be bumping up to the budget that we have. We're hoping that as things get refined, those conservative estimates then become more realistic and come down.
That's where he wants to be at this point. We don't know enough about them to be precise.
That's fine.
Yep. And as they move through design, then we're going to be able to know with a little more precision, you know, what their cost will be, and the numbers, like Steve said, should, and they almost always do, start coming down.
And I had an idea what you were going to say and how you were going to answer, but I think it's also important for us to transparent, full transparency to the public as we go through this process. You know, money is always the question.
Yep.
You can be assured that Mr. Messer and I have already been probing.
They have been probing.
Thank you.
That is true. But without knowing where this second site was going to be, we just didn't have enough information to provide, you know, decent estimates at this point.
Believe me, that's why I asked the question, understanding, and I wouldn't have been shocked if you came back and said, no, we may have a significant issue, we may have to come back to the drawing board. I'm okay with it, as long as we're identifying, communicating, and we can explain it, but we're certainly far away less than where we would if we went the other direction. So I'm okay. I just want to make sure we're transparent.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It was 10 or 11 million bucks.
Any other board members' questions? Thank you again. I apologize for the late getting up to the podium, but this was worth it. I think it's important for the community. I look forward to reading all about it in the transcript in excruciating detail.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Let's see. All right, board members, we're going to go back to the minutes.
We are.
And then we're going to get back right in track with our agenda and what we have left to do. And if anyone's stepping out, I wanted to switch you all Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and if you could turn the light on on your way out.
Please turn the lights on on the way out. Instead of turning them off, turn them on. Hit the switch. Hit the switch.
Board members.
The other way.
Board members, I know we've been here long. Do we want to take a five-minute break? No? Steve, you're good? You're the one that's doing a lot of the reading, so let's rock and roll. We're okay. We can continue. Minutes, November 29, 2018, regular and executive session. Mr. O'Leary.
Okay. November 18th we have, or 29th?
I'm sorry, November 28, 29.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 29, 2018, regular session minutes as written.
Motion is second. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Executive session for November 29.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 29, 2018, executive session minutes as written.
I have a motion, a second by Mr. Minipelli. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. December 3, regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 3 regular session minutes as written.
Motion is second. Mr. Minipelli, any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Posed? 4-0-1. Executive session.
I believe we've passed, I believe the board wanted to pass over that. It takes a good session. At least, I was told.
Isn't that the one you emailed?
You have some comments?
Oh, there was.
You got some other comments? Okay, so we'll wait.
Let's wait.
All right. Pass over that.
December 11, 2018, regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 11, 2018, regular session minutes as written.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have a motion authorizing the chair to sign a grant letter that's been added to the packet and to the agenda. Mr. O'Leary, I think, has it. It's the agenda item before the license renewals.
Yep. So, Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the chair, the chairman, to sign a letter of support for a grant application sponsored by Winchester Hospital for Youth Alcohol Prevention.
I have a motion, a second.
Very brief description, Mr. Chairman. So that's a grant application that's been brought to our attention by Amy Luckowitz, who's the youth substance abuse coordinator, as well as facilitator for the Community Impact Team, and they're intending to apply for the grant and are requesting a letter of support from the board.
Great. That's fantastic. Thank you. So any other comments, questions? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Posed? Unanimous. Now we'll go to license renewals, please. It seems like it gets bigger every year.
It's a good sound.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following common vitular licenses to expire December 31, 2019, subject to our regulatory department requirements. Excuse me. Dairy Queen, Dos Lobos, Ginger Gourmet, Group One Entertainment LLC, Hillview Country Club, Heavenly Donuts, Horseshoe Cafe Inc., Joe Fish Restaurant, Kitty's Restaurant, Mario's Restaurant, Nan's Center Cafe, North Reading Christopher Club, Ria's Store, Sports Spirits &amp; Steaks, The Hornet's Nest, Teresa's Prime Grill 19, Beasa LLC, DBA Subway, and Wendy's.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following common vitular wine and malt beverage license to expire December 31, 2019, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Mario's Restaurant.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following common vitular, all alcohol licenses to expire December 31, 2019, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Dos Lobos, Ginger Gourmet, Group One Entertainment LLC, Hillview Country Club, Horseshoe Cafe Inc., Joe Fish Restaurant, Kitty's Restaurant, Sports Spirits &amp; Steaks, Teresa's Prime Grill 19.
Second.
A motion, a second by Mr. Minipelli. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following fraternal club licenses to expire December 31, 2019, subject to our regulatory department requirements. Loyal Order of Moose, North Reading Christopher Club.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Minipelli. Any discussion?
Just curious, what is a Christopher Club? Knights Club.
Oh. All those in favor? Aye. Posed? Unanimous. Do you have any licenses?
There come.
Package store, all alcohol licenses?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following package store, all alcohol licenses to expire December 31, 2019, subject to our regulatory department requirements. Peace Gate Liquors, New England Beverage and Redemption, One Stop Liquors.
Second.
A motion is second. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following package store wine and malt beverage licenses to expire December 31, 2019, subject to our regulatory department requirements. Christopher's Market, Convenience Plus, Route 28 Lucky Rock, Ria's Store, Speedway.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I will order Mr. Schultz to make the following motions on class one and class two licenses. For the record, to show that I will not be participating in a discussion, as I have a family member who holds a class two license, therefore I will not be participating in discussion or voting. It will be abstained.
Class-one license, Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following class-one licenses to expire January one, two thousand twenty, subject to all Regulatory Department requirements. Bobcat of Boston, Melconian Subaru, and North Running Motorsports.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Posed. And one abstention.
Abstained.
So, four zero one.
Noted.
Mr. Chairman, the next motion deals with Route Twenty-Eight Motors, who's a past client of mine, so, and I have to recuse myself from this, so I'm gonna pass that to Ms. Minipelli.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following class-two licenses to expire January first, two thousand and twenty, subject to all Regulatory Department requirements. NICA, Inc., DBA, Route Twenty-Eight Motors.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messeri?
Second.
Second by Mr. Messeri. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Three, two, three zero two.
Noted.
Livery license.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following livery license to expire December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, subject to our Regulatory Department requirements. Metro Town Car.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Messeri. Any discussion? None heard? Oh, wait a minute. There's a discussion.
Why is it expired, it's two thousand eighteen?
Should be nineteen.
Should be twenty nineteen?
That's what I, that's what I read, because it said eighteen, but it's nineteen. Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, once again, I move to renew the following livery license to expire December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, subject to our Regulatory Department requirements. Metro Town Car. Mr. Messeri seconded.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following jukebox license to expire December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, subject to our Regulatory Department requirements. Loyal Order of the Moose.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following Sunday Entertainment licenses to expire December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, subject to our Regulatory Department requirements. Group One Entertainment LLC, Hillview Country Club, Sports Spirits and Steaks, Teresa Prime Grill Nineteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following license be held in the office of the town administrator until the license has met satisfactory compliance of all issues with the building department. The lobster club.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Just looking for that motion.
So, does this mean we're just, are we voting in favor of this and just holding it?
Mr. Chairman, through you, so the intention here would be to ask the board to vote in favor of the renewal, with the instructions included that the license be held in the office of the town administrator until compliance with the building department items occurs. And the items are relative to, I think, what has been a partial renovation and improvements to it. I can read from a report from the building inspector, but basically, there's some work going on there that is either incomplete, some of which they need to obtain permitting for. That's important enough that the building department was concerned with regard to the renewal. We're optimistic that between now and December thirty-first, that those issues will be addressed, and that we'll be able to release a license for renewal at that point.
If we get to it.
What license are we talking about, though? Doesn't specifically say which license we're holding.
Yeah, so their only license, I believe, they have is a common vitular license from us.
So...
Yeah, sure.
We certainly don't want them to be closed, so is there, do it this way, but if we get to that point, we're gonna have to bring this back up.
I think the way that it's currently written, I think we're gonna pull it up for a lot of the issues.
And if the building...
So, I moved to renew the common vitular license?
Correct.
So, the board has already renewed it because...
We already voted to renew it, I apologize.
And the application was completed at that point in time, but this issue remains unresolved.
So, we already voted it?
Okay.
Yes. So, we already voted it?
At a previous meeting, you voted it, so that's why it's not here tonight.
All right. So, the motion stays, Mr. Chairman, that we can just hold the license until it's issued.
Okay. That's fair. Thank you.
But what happens if they don't complete what they're supposed to?
They get shut down January first.
That's what's gonna happen.
That would be the intention. Again, we're hopeful that that won't be the case, and they don't, I don't wanna represent here that there needs to be, you know, a hundred percent compliance, you know, with some level of reason, obviously, coming from the building department, but there was concern enough that these issues aren't addressed, that they shouldn't be resolved.
Well, again, we don't meet until January fourteenth.
Right.
So, my thought would be, would it be fair, or are you gonna recommend against this, that we change it to January fourteenth, revisit it then? Because I hate to see them closed down, but if it's a significant issue or a major issue, then we'll just leave it as it is, but I don't wanna see them closed unless...
Yes, he's in control of that, though.
Well, it sounds like there's construction. Is it a construction?
There's some construction going on, and some of it is related to the building systems, and some of it's related to the exterior of the building as well, that there needs to be worked under address.
Yeah, and I assume they are working as hard as they can to get there. I only bring it up to the board if we don't meet again until the fourteenth. If it expires...
So, the license, their license will expire, obviously, but they've also already been renewed. They would effectively be operating without the license until it's issued. This is our, you know, our recommendation with regard to how to handle this. We have in the past renewed the license to a further point in time after December thirty-first, but we've also been advised by town council that it's not clear that there's any statutory authority for us to do that either, so that's where this kinda came from.
We'll leave it alone. Thank you.
Again, I'm very optimistic that this will get resolved, and if it becomes such a significant issue that it warrants board discussion, then we'll certainly contact you, Mr. Chairman, and ask for a meeting.
Well, yeah, I just, thank you. I got it. Next, please, Mr. O'Leary. Sorry.
We need to vote.
Can we repeat that moment?
Sorry.
So, the motion is, move that the following license be held in the office of the town administrator until the license he has met satisfactory compliance of all issues with the building department.
And I seconded that, okay.
Second.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device license to expire December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, subject to all Regulatory Requirements. Cowabunga's Entertainment, Kitty's Restaurant, Loyal Order of the Moose, Sports Spirits and Steaks.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Unanimous. Yeah.
Metro Town?
Yeah.
That's a livery license, yeah.
It was all, yeah, it was all one. Steve, what I'll do is I'll hold all the ones that are fully signed.
Those were required.
Steve. Is that where they, it's coming back to you? Just catch your, need your signature. Then I'll bring them all back to you once we're done. So, you don't get overloaded. Or Ms. Brooks will be calling, Mr. O'Leary, come inside something.
Mr. Chairman.
Appointments and reappointments? Appointments and reappointments. Conservation Commission, please.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following names for appointment as member of the Conservation Commission to fill an unexpired term through December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, one opening. Melissa Campbell, Michael Uhl, Randall Mason, John Layton, Lawrence Bouchard, Thomas Sanchez, Beth Adams.
Second.
I have, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Our call has been answered.
Yes.
As you know, we were scrambling for applicants to serve on the Conservation Commission, and we put out the call and got a tremendous response. We've had seven people respond, willing to serve on the Conservation Commission. We've spoken with all of them, and we invited them all to go to the last Conservation Commission meeting, which was last week. Five of the seven were able to make it. It was on late notice, and the other two that couldn't make it, just scheduling problem, weren't able to make it. But all great candidates. On behalf of the board, I thank them very much for stepping forward and their willingness to serve. My recommendation, and again, a consultation, we had the Conservation Commission interview the candidates, met with the candidates, been in a consultation with some members of the Conservation Commission, and the chairperson, and a recommendation to the board is to appoint Melissa Campbell at this particular time, to fill the unexpired term. Melissa is, she's got a bachelor's degree in marine biology, I think that her background and expertise would dovetail well with the current commission members and serve the commission well at this particular time. The other thing that I will be asking the board to do, as I indicated to these people, that now would be a good time to, for us to appoint some associate members.
Yes.
As a feeder program, because we can anticipate over the next year or so, I would expect that we'll have some other vacancies, this is a good chance, and so it would be good if people would be willing to serve as associate members, and from the associates move up into the full membership. So, what I would ask is that at the next meeting, I'll probably be recommending maybe three associate members, have been in a consultation with the chair, some members of the Conservation Commission, they're all in agreement, when we have the interest, let's seize on the moment and groom some people to move into the full membership slot. So, we won't be voting on any nominations for associate members this evening, we'll do it in our first meeting in January.
Great.
So, this evening, just have the one unexpired term, which was Mr. Romeo's, gonna expire December thirty-first. So, Melissa Campbell is the recommendation.
Okay. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I already seconded.
You already seconded?
Yeah.
So, it's a roll call vote?
Yep.
Mrs. Minipelli?
Melissa Campbell.
Mr. Schultz?
Ms. Campbell.
Mr. Messeri?
Melissa Campbell.
Mr. O'Leary?
Melissa Campbell.
And the chair votes Melissa Campbell. And I wanna, again, thank all the members, all the volunteers for stepping up to our call.
Again, I encourage them to stay on the hook here, and hopefully, most of them will stick, and are willing to serve as associate members, and for those that don't get chosen, we have a whole host of other committees and commissions that need some people to serve, and it's wonderful. Again, the response was terrific. Really appreciate it.
Great. Water Commission.
Move to nominate, place a nomination, the following name for reappointment as a member of the Water Commission for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. There are two openings, but only one applicant at this particular time. Joseph Semino, he's the incumbent.
I'll second.
I have a motion and I have a second. So, we only had one applicant for two openings?
The other incumbent moved out of town.
Wonder if any of the CPC applicants may be a fit for this?
We'll see.
CPC, I'm sorry, Conservation.
Conservation.
All right, I got you. Yeah, that would be, that would be great, if somehow, if we had any communication with them to see if any of them would be willing to use their expertise over in the Water Commission would be great. But we have a motion, we have a second, we only have one candidate for two openings, so we'll just go with that for now. It's a roll call vote.
What was her name again?
Mrs. Minipelli? Joseph?
I can't find it.
Semino.
Oh, Joseph Semino.
Semino. Oh, sorry.
Semino.
Mr. Schultz?
Joseph Semino.
Mr. Messeri?
Joseph Semino.
And Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Semino.
And Joseph Semino.
Semino.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment appointment as members of the commission on disabilities for terms to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and one. There are three openings, two applicants, both incumbents. Meg Robertson, Joseph Vino.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Steve, you'll have to inform me on how you got so many candidates.
We put the word on.
I guess we gotta do that across the board.
Semino.
Semino.
We were specific to the Conservation Commission on that.
Yeah, there was a lot of social media awareness on that.
Yeah, you would have to do that.
So, we have a motion, we have a second. Is this a roll call vote as well?
Yep.
Mrs. Minipelli?
We're on Commission on Disabilities.
Meg Robertson and Joseph Vino.
Did we second? Meg Robertson and Joseph Vino.
Mr. Schultz?
Robertson and Vino.
Mr. O'Leary?
Robert Vino.
Mr. Messeri?
Meg Robertson and Joseph Vino.
For those of you who are still tuned in, if you have an interest...
All three of you?
All three of you, yeah.
They fall asleep, they fall asleep at the chair.
Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Messeri, and Mr. Christopher.
Historic, historic commission.
It's getting late.
We're almost there, guys. We're almost there. Historic commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment or appointment as members of the Historic District Commission for terms to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Three openings. Mabel DeFranza, incumbent, Patrick O'Rourke, incumbent, Will Burkebyer, incumbent, and Peter Antonucci.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. My Mrs. Minipelli? Any discussion? Mr. Messiri?
I spoke to the incumbents, and they were all interested in being reappointed. I don't know if there's an associate member.
There isn't, but it doesn't mean we can't.
Right, so it's another one of those, we got, whenever we have a candidate that there's not enough seats for, trying to get them to be an associate member just helps us out, trying to keep these committees filled, so.
So maybe.
I think I'll be with Steve and try to see if we can do something in our next meeting.
That'd be great.
Sure. But for this.
I'll be recommending the three incumbents, incumbents, for, excuse me.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Messiri, you want to lead us off?
Recommend Mabel DeFranza, Patrick O'Rourke, and Will Burkmire.
Mr. O'Leary?
Mabel DeFranza, Patrick O'Rourke, William Burkmire.
Mr. Schultz?
DeFranza, O'Rourke, and Burkmire.
Mrs. Minipelli?
Mabel DeFranza, Patrick O'Rourke, and Will Burkmire.
And the chair votes DeFranza, O'Rourke, and Burkmire. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment or appointment as members of the Historical Commission for a term to expire December 31st, 2021. Chris Hayden, incumbent. Les Masterson, incumbent. Chloe McGrath.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second, my Mrs. Minipelli? Any discussion? Great that we have three candidates. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Hayden, Mr. Masterson, and Ms. McGrath.
Mr. Messiri?
Chris Hayden, Les Masterson, and Chloe McGrath.
Mr. Schultz?
Hayden, Masterson, and McGrath.
Mrs. Minipelli?
Chris Hayden, Les Masterson, and Chloe McGrath.
And the chair votes Chris Hayden, Les Masterson, and Chloe McGrath. Library trustees.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment or appointment as members of the Library Trustees for terms to expire December 31st, 2021. Two openings. Sarah Ralph, incumbent. Mary Ann Leib, incumbent. Kerry Antonuccio, Jennifer Thompson.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mrs. Minipelli? Any discussion?
I spoke to the two incumbents. They're very interested in continuing on, and I did not know there were a couple of others that are interested, and I think, again.
Yep.
Maybe we'll look into associate membership.
Fantastic. I like the idea. Mr. O'Leary?
Sorry, who seconded that?
Kate did.
Kate did. So Sarah Ralph, Mary Ann Leib.
Mr. Messiri?
Sarah Ralph, Mary Ann Leib.
Mr. Schultz?
Ms. Ralph and Ms. Leib.
Mrs. Minipelli?
Sarah Ralph and Mary Ann Leib.
And the chair votes Sarah Ralph and Mary Ann Leib.
Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment or appointment to Youth Services Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2001. There are three openings. Patricia Harrington, incumbent. Danielle Masterson. Jason Slattery.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard? This is a roll call vote? Mr. O'Leary?
Patricia Harrington, Danielle Masterson, Jason Slattery.
Mr. Messiri?
Patricia Harrington, Danielle Masterson, and Jason Slattery.
Mr. Schultz?
Ms. Harrington, Ms. Masterson, and Mr. Slattery.
Mrs. Minipelli?
Patricia Harrington, Danielle Masterson, and Jason Slattery.
And the chair votes Patricia Harrington, Danielle Masterson, Jason Slattery.
Quickly advise the board that Judy Hall and Kathy Dardino were actually the incumbents that did not want to seek reappointment, so I think it might be a nice, I would like us, if we can, at the next town meeting, to acknowledge them for their service. They've been long-term, they were actually started the.
Charter members.
Yes, charter members.
We should definitely do that. A lot of recognition for them.
Yes, that'd be great.
Take a moment at town meetings.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Process serving constables.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following names for reappointment as process serving constables for terms to expire December 31st, 2019. There are five openings. John Fiorello, incumbent. Paul Dorsey, incumbent. Douglas Lab, incumbent. David Rosati, incumbent. Paula DeRosa, incumbent.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard? Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Dorsey, Mr. Lab, Mr. Rosati, and Mrs. DeRosa.
Mr. Messiri?
John Fiorello, Paul Dorsey, Douglas Lab, David Rosati, and Paula DeRosias.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Dorsey, Mr. Lab, Mr. Rosati, and Ms. DeRosias.
Mrs. Minipelli?
John Fiorello, Paul Dorsey, Douglas Lab, David Rosati, and Paula DeRosier.
And the chair votes Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Dorsey, Mr. Lab, Mr. Rosati, and Mrs. DeRosa. Martins Pond Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following name for reappointment as a member of the Martins Pond Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2021. There is one opening. George Cangiano Jr., incumbent.
Second.
Aye.
Second.
Mrs. Minipelli?
Sorry.
And Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Cangiano.
Mr. Messiri?
George Cangiano Jr.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Cangiano.
Mrs. Minipelli?
George Cangiano Jr.
And the chair votes Mr. Cangiano. Okay. And that's it, right? No, one more. Then we're gonna talk about the review and vote on the special employee status. Mr. Gilberto?
Mr. Chairman, through you, I have been provided and have forwarded to the board a report of the Human Resources Director relative to the positions that were previously designated as special municipal employees for calendar year 2018. You'll see in the listing that the recommendation is to renew that designation for the positions within the Parks and Recreation Department, the Police Department, the Council on Aging, and the Finance Committee. And there was also a request to add a position, a new position, which is a part-time position through the Youth Substance Abuse Grant, known as the co-facilitator for the youth action team. And I think, as you saw, or may have seen in the report from Mr. Collins, this is something that's been referred to us by the Youth Substance Abuse Grant Coordinator. It appears that, based on the advertising that we've done, the level of interest that we've seen has come mostly from public school teachers, who will want to take on the responsibility, which, obviously, they would bring a tremendous skill set for that, but we're not able to lawfully make the appointment without the position being designated as special municipal employee, and therefore, making the request for that designation.
Thank you.
I believe we've prepared a motion accordingly.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reaffirm the vote of December 14, 2017. Reaffirm. Reaffirm. Which was, what was the one? Oh, we got a new one here, okay. Okay, reaffirm the vote of December 4, 2017, designating the following positions as having special municipal employee status pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A. Parks and Recreation, infant toddler instructor, after-school instructor, coach. Summer program instructor, coach. Summer program director, summer program assistant director, summer counselor. Police Department, matron, crossing guard. Council on Aging, van driver. Finance Committee, recording secretary.
I have a second?
Please.
There's more? Oh, sorry.
Nope.
I believe there's more.
That's it. The next one is a separate, oh, excuse me. Add to, you're right, add to add. On the second page. Add to add the following positions as having special municipal employee status pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A. Police Department, co-facilitators, plural, for the youth action team.
Second. Motion and a second, my Mr. Schultz, maybe. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Ratify and sign memorandum of agreement for the North Reading Administrative Staff. Mr. Gilberto?
Mr. Chairman, through you, this would be a ratification for a memorandum of agreement between the town and the North Reading Administrative Staff Union. This is a union that represents many of the administrative staff in the town hall, as well as at the Council on Aging and the civilian staff within the police and fire departments as well. This would be a three-year agreement that would cover the period beginning July 1st, 2018, running through June 30th of 2020. And we intend to come back to the select board with a draft integrated contract for ratification as soon as possible, much in the same fashion that we've handled integrated contracts in the past. And I wish to thank and recognize the Human Resources Director, Bob Collins, for spearheading the negotiations on behalf of the town, to select board members Schultz and Minipelli for their participation in the bargaining sessions, the finance director for her assistance, and of course, the union bargaining team and their attorney for coming to the table with us and reaching this agreement between the town and the union.
Mr. O'Leary, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify and sign the memorandum of agreement between the town of North Reading and the North Reading Administrative Staff for the period of July 1st, 2018, June 30th, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, bear with me while I catch up. Thank you. I'll just note that curbside yard waste collection concluded on Saturday this past weekend. It was a second collection that took place. Holiday trash and recycling collection is as follows. Next week, it will be on Wednesday, December 26th. The following week, it'll be on Wednesday, January 2nd. We have scheduled Christmas tree collection to occur on Saturday, January 12th, and we remind the public that any items must be curbside by 6:30 a.m. The Public Works Director is intending to approach JRM, which is our trash recycling hauler, about the possibility of a one-year extension of the current trash and recycling agreement in the interest of potentially controlling costs and potentially bringing on a recycling coordinator to assist with this program for the long term. That'd be something that we would be looking at as part of the fiscal year 2020 budget process for the board to ultimately make a recommendation to town meeting. If the conversation were to prove to be fruitful, we would bring the potential terms to, for, I'm sorry, excuse me, if the conversation were to prove to be unfruitful, we would bring the potential terms for an RFP, as we've discussed in open forums in the past, to the board for review. I attached letters from residents who are interested in town-owned land, only just to put them on the board members' radar, and we do intend to schedule these for initial consideration at a meeting in January, if not on the 14th, then on the 28th. I also included for the board members an update regarding the CPC's master planning process. Some of you may be aware that they received an update from MAPC at their meeting, I believe